Everybody. And go Vegas Golden Knights. How about that? Sweet. Okay, the April 18th meeting, 2018 meeting of the City Council's call to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2. Our closed caption for hearing impaired viewers. Please note, customers of CenturyLink and Cox Communication, you may view this program in high definition on channel 1002. The council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming may be viewed on the internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast, KCLV Channel 2, on the web. The Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM for all of our visitors, you can see yourselves again on tonight at 8:00, Friday at 4:00 AM if you get up, 7:00 PM on Saturday, 7:00 AM on Sunday, and next Monday at 5:00 PM. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler systems. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers going out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace going down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please be sure to check with the city marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewiston First. Employees wearing safety vests, or our city marshals will inform you with safe to re-enter the building. For public comment, related items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online, in the clerk's office, or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone's present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please see our city clerk staff up front. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, please be sure to have your ticket validated by security officers when leaving. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Rabbi Abi Anderson, Young Israel Ayesha Las Vegas, and remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you. Almighty God, as the City Council convenes, we pray that its public service should be engaging and exciting to its members. We pray that council members' work shall never feel habitual or stale. Help the City Council to continually reach new and meaningful goals. Eternal God, King David remarks in Psalms, "I rejoice over your word as if I have found a great treasure." When a person finds a treasure, he is thrilled. This feeling is ephemeral, lasting only a short time, and then quickly abating. Yet, King David states that every day he rejoices as if the treasure was just found. His service was continually fresh, exciting, and precious. And so, dear God, we pray that you help the dedicated members of this City Council emulate the ways of King David to consistently serve with passion and enthusiasm. We pray that you fill each day for them with meaning and purpose, aiding those who engage in the betterment of our city to continually transform themselves in their mission to assist others. May it be your will, and let us say amen.
Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not a doubt, united in its rightful, with liberty and justice. How come you're so happy? You have no idea what this is like. However, you have put in the late hours of planning, I know that. And we're all so grateful that we don't have to stay here too often till 11:00 and midnight. So for your family. Anyway, it's my honor to administer the oath of office to our new, finally, Ward Five City Councilman. Would Cedric Creer please come forward to the podium?
Hello. Hello, sir. Hello.
Okay, no, 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 you have to go all the way around. Yeah, because you got to put the right hand up. Okay. Okay, he's saying no kissing. And I have to tell you, I've known this young man since he's four years old. So I know all the troubles you got into, so you better stay clean here. Okay. So I'd like to ask his beautiful wife, Kiba, to come up, please. Daughters Kennedy and Hagan, where are you, daughters? Come on. Mother-in-law, Elsie Hagan? They sure know now. His aunt, Drusilla, please. Uncle Rudy Hunter? One of my favorites. His great brother Kenneth, where are you, Kenneth? Where are you, Kenneth? Of course, I think you'd be by the aisle. Cool guy. And nieces, Minone, where are you? Come on up. Baker and Taylor? And her husband Kyle Collier? Goodness, is anybody gonna be left in the audience? Wow. Did I miss anybody? Okay. So we're happy to have you here, all of you, to celebrate with this fine young man. And you look very handsome today, and he's had his, his wife came and fixed the office so nicely, and so you can go home at night and feel comfortable that she's welcoming you back. Okay, so I understand, Kiba, you will be holding the family Bible. And at this time, I'm pleased to administer your formal oath here. If you will raise your right hand. See, if you'd been over here, nobody would have seen that. Okay, very serious, I'm not gonna mess around anymore. Do you solemnly swear that you will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and Government of the United States and the Constitution and Government of the State of Nevada against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign, and that you will bear true faith, allegiance and loyalty to the same, any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding, and further that you are not under any direct or indirect obligation to vote for, appoint, or elect any person to any office, position, or employment in the city government of the City of Las Vegas, and further that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office on which you are about to enter. So help you God, and further that your bona fide address is shown herein and that you will immediately notify the City of Las Vegas of any change of address during your term of office. One more time.
I do, thank you.
We are so proud. Welcome to City Council. So in addition, you didn't get a rose, because you get something that is forever. Mayor Protem?
Thank you very much.
Now it's all official, Cedric. All that hard work, and you know what we all say to you? Good luck.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any comments? You want to say anything? Comment, comment. Well, I hope you brought the scotch for today. Okay, Councilman?
No, thank you.
Nothing. He just wants to wish you good luck, that's right. I can't even see the rest of the council. Anything? He's smiling. A little something? Anthony, you may. Before I give it to him, this is your last chance to get on him.
Piece of ear. Well, I have to say two things. Number one, it was an honor to work on the Nevada System of Higher Education Board of Regions with Cedric. I think we did some great things up there. And I consider Cedric my Greek brother.
Yeah.
We're both Greeks in my world, so.
Piece of ear.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, and welcome to the City Council.
Thank you, brother. Appreciate it, man. Thank you.
Just, we're not brothers yet, but I just say welcome and congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
It'll be a great ride together.
Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so, it's your turn. This is, you have total concentration from all of us. Oh, look, how well-prepared he is. Okay. Well, you've got such a beautiful family, it's wonderful. Hopefully, you're thanking them, because you wouldn't be here without your family.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and the entire city staff, including our Ward Five team. You know, you've all have welcomed me with open arms in the City Hall so far, and it's a blessing. And I don't take it for granted that I've had an opportunity to get in and really get our feet wet and start doing the work of the people. You know, one of the best parts about being sworn in today is that the mayor now can give me more than one minute to speak. If you've ever come to a City Council, you've seen public comment, the mayor says you got one minute. So thank you for that. You know, I have to thank my family for being here and for their unyielding and continued support. My wife, Kiba, who is my best friend, we've been together for 30 years, we've been married for 23 years, and it is such a blessing to have her in my life. My daughter, Hagan, who came in from college today, and I have to give a special thank you to her French and her poli sci teacher for working with her to allow her to come here today at Howard, so thank you. My daughter, Kennedy, who is a blessing in our life, thank you. My brother, Kenneth, who is my main man, that's my guy. My uncle Rudy, who is also my guy. My beautiful mother-in-law, who is here, Ms. Elsie Hagan, who came in from New Orleans. My sister-in-law, Drusilla, thank you for coming in from Houston. My niece and nephew, Taylor and Kyle, who came from California. And then a surprise guest who showed up, I woke up this morning, and I didn't know she was in my home, is the person who is my niece who's headed to Coachella, if you cannot My beautiful niece, Minone, she's the best, came in from Atlanta to be here today. You know, if my parents were alive, they'd be so proud of our family and would have gotten here very, very early this morning. They would have been up in my office, and my mother would have been sitting right here in the front row, dressed to the nines, with her big glasses on. And they would be just so ecstatic, and I really wish they were here, but I know they're looking down now and saying, what a great day this is, and all the work we're gonna do. She'd be right there with me, my dad'd be right there with me. I also have to thank my campaign team for their hard work and dedication towards our successful election. You know, every one of you shares in today. It's not just me, but it's our entire team that got us here. I'd like to thank Pastor Kelsey West, who blessed our office this morning. Thank you very much for me and my ministries. I urge you to go by and visit his church, it's the Dynamic Young Church with the Dynamic Young Pastor, and he's a fantastic individual. I also want to thank all my neighbors and my friends in Ward Five for entrusting me with their responsibility of leading the ward. I do not take this lightly, and I'm very humbled by your trust in me. And all my friends, colleagues, and supporters, thank you for being here. Special 06 to my fraternity, the Brothers of Alpha 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 Incorporated for being here, the First Coalition Fraternity in the history of the world. Thank you, guys. 1119?
Move!
There you go, brothers. So today's not a day for long speeches. You know, it's a day that we officially start to move our community towards a more prosperous future. We've got a lot of work to do, so let's get to work. Thank you, guys.
Wonderful. Oh, my gosh.
Oh, no.
I know. No, you know, it's only fair that everybody should know. You told me the story of how you met your beautiful wife. It was a little slow on the take, I didn't realize it took you seven years to ask her to marry you? No, you gotta hear this. How long, when you walked into class?
Yeah. So, thank you, Mayor. My wife and I met at Howard University on the campus, and we met the second day I got to Howard. And I always say, I was on a roll on day one. And then I met my wife, and it was the biggest blessing in my entire life. We have literally been together for 30 years, and, you know, sometimes, thank you. You know, many times people, people grow apart in their, in their life. We have been blessed by God, literally, and we have grown together. And she is my partner, she is my rock, and I would not be the man that I am today if it wasn't for my wife, Kiba. So God bless you, babe.
I always believe in the truth, Cedric, you know that. So congratulations, we're so thrilled. You can't go away, you have to give that to somebody, you've got work to do now. Thank you all for participating. I mean, what a great fan. Oh, picture. Picture, there's Shane.
Shane.
Okay. So should we move the podium, or we could do it at the podium? Oh, no, that's too much for you. Too much, Councilman.
Where's Shane? I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, I was gonna do it.
Okay, let's have the family, too, and then we'll do one with just the council and Councilman Creer. Not Councilman-elect anymore. All right, come, little person. No, I have a little person here, so there you are. Be front. All right, can everybody, can come across, too? Yeah, okay, are we ready? Okay, see Shane in the blue shirt? Is that blue or pink?
Purple.
Okay, great. Okay, and now, family, thank you so much for coming. Don't go away, Councilmen. We're gonna do a council picture.
Perfect.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, we'll put you in the middle, can we fan? How many of us? We'll be women on the side. Come on. Does somebody not show?
No, there was one, there was one extra.
No doubt. I had one extra just in case.
Okay. Let me put this down. Oh, and the Bible. Okay, we'll give it to Kiba. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, don't go away, though. All right, whose Bible?
Mayor, let's get a picture, we're gonna sit up here with the certificate and just a nice council shot.
What do you want us to do?
I want you to be in the middle and.
Okay.
And put like, so.
Oh, I see. So where is Councilman Soroka?
Councilman Soroka? Here he comes back. The leash isn't long enough. Thank you. Okay. Where did I see? We have an extra Bible, is that the City Bible? Okay, good. Okay, so now we'll continue on with our ceremonials. That was just in case. Okay. Where'd he go? Oh, he's up here. Are you ready?
Am I ready?
Yeah, well, I mean, let's go, yeah? All right, here we go. You're the biggest part of the morning, but we have some other, few things for the ceremonials. All right. Before we get to other ceremonial items of the day, I wanted to take a moment to recognize Second Chance Month. Every April is Second Chance Month, and cities all over the country pause to recognize this second chance. The purpose is to show that those who've made mistakes with the law, paid their debts to society, can still be an asset to their communities. This Friday at 4:30 PM, a local group called Hope for Prisoners will hold a graduation ceremony at Metro Police Headquarters at Alta and Martin Luther King for individuals who have turned their lives around. Our dear friend, John Ponder, will be there, and if you can, I'd suggest, if you could, stop by and see what a second chance has really done for these individuals, as well as how Hope for Prisoners has become a real asset to our community. So it really is quite a, hey, Brenda. I see Brenda Williams in there. How are you? You came to celebrate, too, and a little bit more, I know that. Okay. For our other ceremonial item today, it's a pleasure to recognize our Employee of the Month for April, and I'd like to invite our Public Works Director, Mike Jansen, to join us at the podium, please. Our employees strive to meet our values of being kind, committed, and smart, and they work to build our community, to make life better. I'm proud to announce that the Employee of the Month is Lee Jeskowski. Lee has been a valued asset to the Public Works team at the Water Pollution Control Facility for more than two decades. In that time, Lee has become known as the go-to mechanic at the plant, and has regularly sought out for his opinions and expertise on a wide array of topics. He not only completes his assignment, he ensures his fellow crew members complete theirs. He's never shied away from helping others, and has never expected praise or thanks. Lee's involved in many new and ongoing projects, and often offers solutions that benefit our residents. He regularly recognizes problems during the design phase of projects, and offers solutions that save the city money in the long term. Lee's an excellent teacher and coach to all willing to learn, especially within his crew group. He's actively involved in ensuring the Water Pollution Control Facility is in good hands for years to come. So Lee, thank you for all the hard work you put in here at the city, and I'm proud to name you Employee of the Month. Please come on down. A modest soul, you know that. Congratulations. No, 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 20 years. Go on, long of tooth. Okay, and Lee, before we hear from Mike, and then from you, please, I want to, we want to present you with our award. Beautiful, if you would do that. How lovely. It's a beautiful picture of City Hall, which is much more attractive than the last City Hall. And let's see where we are, and I want you to look to your left, where you'll see a sign that will be posted at Main Street outside of City Hall to celebrate you for the month. And I want to ask Mike to say a few words before we hear from you. And I also want to thank this great guy, Mike Jansen, who's doing just a great job in Public Works for us, and always smiling, and has crinkles around his eyes from smiling so much. But what a positive addition you've been to our city, and so how wonderful to hear from you and hear about Lee. Don't go off.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, so much for the, for the kind words. I just got a few words that I wanted to mention about Lee, and I felt it was the best way to, to give a few words about Lee was to speak with his coworkers, some of his prior supervisors, and his current supervisor. And a couple of the statements I got from them were really telling of how great of an employee Lee is. The first one I got was, I've never given Lee an assignment that he didn't complete superlatively. Not just complete well, but superlatively. Second, watching Leesky, that's his little nickname out there, watching Leesky work in the field is like watching an artist paint. That's a straight quote from one of his former supervisors. Lee's been our senior maintenance mechanic at the plant. He was hired November of 95, and the basic responses that I got from staff is, the man has hands of gold, he can fix anything, and the Water Pollution Control Facility is a location that has to run 24/7, 365, and guys like Lee, they're invaluable. So, Lee, thank you very much.
Thank you. Because it's only been these 20-plus years or months going into it, I want to give you a good luck mayorship for good health, good health going forward and safety, and how about a few words?
Okay. I'm not really good at this, but I'd like to thank the people who helped me come, you know, learn everything that I've known, because when I walked onto that plant, I was like amazed at how big it was and how much stuff it was. People like Keith and my father-in-law, who helped me along with learning all the tests and stuff, that was really, really nice. And now, after 22 years, that place is so tiny to me, it's like there's nothing to do. It's like, I just love teaching the people that are coming along now that are gonna keep this place going the way it was. So thank you all.
So proud of you. Let's step over here and have a picture taken, and take that over, if you would, council persons. Would you go over there, please? As you all know, as I started off, because I was so excited, I couldn't sleep last night dreaming about how great our goalie was, and we have a photo op, which of course, council loves, and if I can get our new councilman over here. You don't have to campaign anymore. I'm the devil, and he knows it, it's been too long. Okay, so it's a picture of the clean sweep. So come on in close.
What do you want us to do? Sweep, everyone else pick a number. I sweep all the night. Come on, Mayor, sweep.
Sweep.
Sweep up here. Go ahead, do it, you're very sweet. Okay, we are doing this because we love social media. Okay, we're gonna go right into our council meeting. We need help here, see?
I do not.
Everybody who came down here, I want to give you a good luck mayorship. You came all the way in here for our new councilman. It's good luck, good health, and good luck. Okay. Good health and good luck to you, and stay helping this fine man. Help, help Cedric, please. And good luck and good health. Good luck, and you get one, Kenneth, too. Your folks would be so proud. Good hu, oh, I'm so sorry, that's me dragging, yeah, extra. One more. Good luck and good health.
For me?
Yeah, you need, you don't need good luck and good health?
I always need that, yes.
Good luck, good health. Who did I? Who did I not get? Good luck and good health, mayorship, and get out of jail free, actually. No, you can have that, you came here for Cedric.
I just wanted to say hi to you. I met your husband many times, but I've never met you.
Fifty-six years married.
And I live in Cleveland, right every time I pass middle school.
Oh, you're in that neighborhood. We just had coffee with the mayor up there at the Omelet House next to Smith's, he'll be the cop. Next time, next time, come.
I live near his 203, so.
Isn't it great, Lee? Yeah, I love it.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks. Keep supporting him, he's gonna need it. You get one too. Thank you. Good luck and good health. Thank you for coming. He's great.
Thank you so much.
Oh, my gosh, let me...
You're the education man.
Try. Wait, let me give you.
I think I gave you a copy of my last book tonight. I think you have a copy of that.
I do up in my office, doesn't matter.
Thank you so much.
Good luck, good health, and thank you.
What is Tyrone, Lee?
Okay. Okay. Take care. Thank you. Okay. This is for you. That was nice. I have a feeling I'm missing something.
Thank you.
Take care. Did I give you a chip?
No, I didn't.
Wait, can we have a chip?
Can I have one?
Yes.
Congratulations.
So proud.
You're very happy for me.
Okay. All right, so, Jase? Okay, everybody, I'm gonna ask, where did he go? Where are councilpersons? Councilman Cedric Creer. Oh, is this going to be ahead of time? I know, he's having a good time. Party's over. Nah, he's not listening.
Nobody's listening.
I'm not gonna let you have any lunch.
He's doing his best.
No, it is. It was a great turnout.
You know, I finally got over my complex expanding next to Wolfson's.
Because he's so tall?
And along comes another big guy.
Oh, right. All right. Are we here, one, two, three, four? We're ready to go on. We're on Agenda Item Number Seven. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speakers allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council will not respond or engage in dialogue. We'll set the time at one minute. Please, Mr. Newsom.
Yes. You know, I wanted to just say congratulations again to my friend.
No, 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 you have to say who's your...
Oh, I'm sorry?
You have to say your name.
Oh, yeah, that's right. My name is Shondell Newsom. I am the founder and visionary for Some New Marketing, located in Ward 5, 1951 Stella Lake Street, at the Urban Chamber of Commerce Business Development Center. Also, I'm the chairman of the Board of Directors for the Urban Chamber of Commerce, and on behalf of the Board of Directors, I would say congratulations to our friend, the new councilman, Creer. Cedric and I have known each other for over 20 years. My wife was telling me that this morning. In fact, my wife used to keep his children years ago. So it's amazing to see the progress. We met working at Station Casinos as young marketing directors, and then we shared an office together during the recession. We both suffered great loss. I lost 60% of my revenues, Cedric lost almost all his money too. So we shared an office just to get through the recession, and just to, that is a testament of what his commitment is as a friend, as a loyal person, and as a businessman, that we survived and thrived through this recession and made it through. And now, we're gonna be working together to help those small businesses who are just like us at the Urban Chamber. We're gonna help them learn how to compete locally, regionally, nationally, and globally. So I appreciate you, my friend. Thank you. God bless you.
And Mr. Newsom, thank you for coming down. We love you. You do a great job.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Ken Evans, president for the Urban Chamber of Commerce. Good morning to all of you, mayor, members of the council. I too want to say congratulations to the new councilman, Ward 5 Councilman Cedric Creer. We're very proud of you, we look forward to working with you. I won't repeat everything that my Urban Chamber Board chair said, but suffice it to say, we look forward to continuing to work with all of you, and in particular, Councilman Creer. Congratulations again.
Thank you so much for coming down, Mr. Evans. Anyone else? Come right on in. You may have to vault over him. Nope. So you each have to say your names.
I don't know if we're on the agenda, or just...
Oh, you're in the public comment, which is fine, and you each have a minute, and if you'll just, we don't need an address, but we'd love to have your name, please.
My name is David Booth, and Mr. Jack Thiel is with me this morning.
Do you want to step to that mic and say your name, please?
My name is Jack Thiel, and thank you very much for having us today.
Okay, we're here this morning, and good morning, Your Honor, and councilpeople. We're here this morning from the Couples Club from St. Thomas More Catholic Church in Henderson. At our monthly activities, one of our activities is the, we go to the Catholic Charities down on Foremaster and Las Vegas Boulevard, where we volunteer to help with the serving of the food and in the pantry. Members of our club go every month, and during this time, we've noticed with much concern and interest the trash on the street, in the gutters and in the vacant lots near Catholic Charities. These conditions have brought concern to our club members, and concern for the health of the people on the street, as well as concern for the city of Las Vegas. It appears it's ripe for health and safety problems pretty soon. So the Couples Club of St. Thomas More Catholic Church in Henderson, we come this morning to ask for the possibilities that the city could consider putting trash dumpsters on the sidewalks in that area. We hope that the people living there might use them. We're not aware of the past history of this, or anything similar to this project, and the cost, or if it's ever been tried before, but we thought with the help of Republic Services possible, it might be a start to clean up. We realize that we're from Henderson, we're not from Las Vegas, but as a club there, we feel that this problem is not just for Las Vegas, it's for everybody that lives in the area. So the Couples Club of St. Thomas More Catholic Church, hope that you will give our suggestions a consideration, and we have a letter for you.
Wonderful. If we can give that to our city clerk, and we will make sure it gets into the right hands, we're working very hard on that entire corridor of hope and the courtyard and everything, so your points are well taken, and we appreciate it. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much for your time, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Thanks, Jack. Anyone else? I will close public comment then, and we will move on to Agenda Item Eight. Business items for possible action. Any items council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken and table withdrawn or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
Yes, we have one item, a consent item 37, for possible action to authorize staff to condemn for the purchase of property rights for the Sheep Mountain Parkway, CC 215, to Kyle Canyon Road Project, located west of Wallapie Road between the Iron Mountain Road alignment and Kyle Canyon Road. And a request to obey to June 20th of this year has been made by Councilwoman Fiori, and so this will be obeyed. There is another consent item that we wanted to trail, but I thought that we would do that when we get to the consent items.
So that's your motion?
That is the motion. I move to...
Obey 37?
Obey 37 to June 20th, 2018.
Thank you. This is motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Items nine through 42, with the exception of 37, on the consent agenda considered to be routine and recommended for approval by the departments, may be enacted in one motion. We have a correction on Agenda Item Number 23, in that the negotiated price did not change, but a parcel was added to the transaction, and the record should reflect. The APN for that additional parcel is number #139-27-211-006. Also note that the record should reflect my abstention on item number nine, because it's related to medical marijuana. One of my sons is involved in that industry, so I will be voting on the other items. Are there any items that council wishes to bring forward? Okay, Mayor Protem, I would ask you to vote on the, make a motion to vote on this consent agenda.
Except I did want to say on this consent agenda, the two that I wanted to trail were 27 and 28.
Oh, okay.
So trailing 27 and 28 until we have time to meet, there's a problem there in that I have had no contact whatsoever.
Well, let's pass what you've just gotten, we'll trail 27 and 28.
All right, then I move to approve all that we have mentioned, and that the mayor has stated, and to trail 27 and 28.
Okay, this is motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries, we'll go to Agenda Item 27, for possible action to approve a tavern license for change ownership from Lineage Seafood House Nevada Inc. to Nevada Restaurant Services Inc., DBA Bourbon Street Sports Bar, number 145, at 2610 West Sahara. And this is, Councilwoman, now make your comments, if you would. Oh, and let me read 28 as well. For possible... For possible action to approve a restricted gaming license, Nevada Restaurant Services, Inc., DBA Bourbon Street Sports Bar, number one four five, at twenty-six ten West Sahara, again with Councilwoman Tarkanian. So your comments and motion.
The comments are that our ward office, and I think you know because I think I discussed with you, we had no notification when Landry's was sold. We had no notification when this new Bourbon Street Sports Bar came. And because we're building the, you know, the new Station Casinos is building a brand-new, state-of-the-art casino across the way, we're putting an emphasis on approving that area. I thought we should know more about this, and I wanted to obey it. So however, then the people came from Bourbon Street Sports Bar and said that they have a... They're opening tomorrow. And can't... I just don't see how we can do that.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and allow comment here, 'cause I mean, obviously, this is a very ticklish situation. So please...
Yes. Mayor George Garcia, ten fifty-five, Whitney Ranch Drive, Suite Two and Ten. Pleasure to be before you. With me is Ken, if you want to come up and introduce yourself.
Kenon Smith.
There you are. You're on.
Sorry about that. Kenon Smith. I'm general counsel for Nevada Restaurant Services, three six four five Rosie Road, North Las Vegas.
Mayor, we had asked to have this trailed because this obviously did not come into our attention until actually just as the meeting was getting started, so that this might be held today. So up till now, we assumed it was on the consent, there'd be no problem. We understand Councilwoman Tarkanian's unawareness of maybe some of the details for Bourbon Street. We have, however, opened up other Bourbon Streets in the city before without any issue. There was no reason to suspect a problem, and I do respect the Councilwoman. So we asked to trail it so we could have a bit, a little bit of time with her, perhaps to walk through it with business licensing and show her some of the photos so she could better understand it, and hopefully get this approved today, as we do expect open tomorrow.
Thank you. Ms. McElhone, if you'd care to join us, please, up here and enlighten us all.
For the record, Mary McElhone, deputy planning director. As Mr. Garcia did state, we do have two of these Bourbon Street Bars and Grills owned by Nevada Restaurant Services that are currently open within the city. Both of them currently are in Ward Six. I have with me today as part of the packet that they submitted to us a floor plan that I can show you. So this is the floor plan. Over here are the dining seats. There will be twenty-five dining seats, and then all... Then there's some fifteen slot machines. So some of them are stand-up, and some of them are in the bar. The other thing that this location has is they have two pool tables, and they also have screens to view sporting events lined up along the walls of the building on the interior.
So the configuration is pretty much like your other...
Right. The configuration is very similar to the other Bourbon Streets that we have approved. They also have a lot of non-gaming amusement machines. So they have ski ball and some other type of non-gaming, you know, hoops and things like that that are not gaming-related that they also have within the establishment.
I'd just like to say a few words, please, because I've been talking to legal counsel about this and other people. I have to tell you, George, I don't understand why we wouldn't have had a single contact from the people who purchased this. This is a situation where we had a very fine restaurant, family restaurant, you know, a class level. It wasn't sports bar level. It was a good class, you know, a family eating level. And we are now reducing that. And I don't know what's gonna happen to the Macaroni Grill. I hope somebody from the company talks to us about that one. But understand, in this area, we've been raising the bar because of the situation with what we're building there. I would like to trail this until the beginning of the afternoon session, Mayor, if that's all right with you, so we have more time to talk, and I'll be glad to talk with you during the lunchtime. But I really feel that we should have had some contact. Now, I didn't make a contact. I've been out of work for a while, the last week or so, but that doesn't mean that somebody from the company, before you closed the other, you know, we went to eat there. We go to eat at Landry's, and it's closed. And I think Mr. Seroka went just recently, and it's closed. It was like a stealth move. Anyway, okay. That's what I would like to do. I would like to move that we do it.
And then what I'll do, so you don't have to wait all day, we'll trail it to after lunch, which is one o'clock, and we will bring these two items forward first at one o'clock.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Is that okay?
That's okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
So Agenda Items. Do we need a motion to do that? No. All right. So if you'll just remind me that Twenty-Seven, Twenty-Eight will be the first thing after the one o'clock break. Thank you very much. Okay, so...
Madam Mayor, Terry Poncello?
Yes, thank you.
You need a motion on the consent items.
We did... We did move and approve.
And then you moved, and you did your abstention.
We trailed these two, which we're not hearing at this point till.
Okay.
So we did a vote. We voted on the others before. Right, and trailed those. So... All right. So now I see us on to Forty-Three? Okay. Agenda Item Forty-three, abeyance item, public hearing discussion for possible action to consider a request for wa... For a waiver and/or reduction of fees totaling one thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars and out-of-pocket costs eighteen thousand five hundred fifty dollars in civil penalties for a total of twenty thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars. Recorded against the property located at Two Twenty South Bruce, property owner, Bank of New York Malone Trust, Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. This public hearing, I declare it open, and good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Council. Vicky Ozuna, code enforcement supervisor. The item for you today is a public hearing for a request of waiver of civil penalties at the request of the current property owner of Bank of New York Malone for the property at Two Twenty South Bruce Street. They have owned this property since October sixth, two thousand fifteen, and this case was opened December twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen due to a complaint from Nevada Power that people were living within the structure with... Without legal power. Code enforcement staff notified Bank of New York Malone about the situation. In addition, we also notified Recon Trust, Western Progressive, Ocwen Loan Servicing, and Alta Source Residential LP that the property was occupied and substandard due to the lack of power, refuse some waste, and appeared to be occupied by squatters. No action was taken by the Bank of Malone, New York Malone, and on October fourth, two thousand seventeen, a contractor was hired to secure all open doors and windows, remove all trash and debris, high weeds, and accessory structures from the property. The property owners requesting a waiver of all civil penalties that have been assessed on the property. The outstanding out-of-pocket amounts on this property are one thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars and outstanding daily civil penalties of eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for a total of twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars. Staff recommends denial of this request.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Anyone wishing to make comments on this particular agendized item? I'll close the public hearing, and Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's kind of been my intention to abate most of the expenses accrued here. None of the hard costs would be abated by us, but I'm willing to abate the majority, vast majority, actually, of the administrative costs. And the reason is, is because they now... We find out now after that meeting that, in fact, the bank has a contract for sale with a person. In fact, had the contract for sale in effect at the time of the meeting. So, you know, I'm inclined to do that. If you argue with me, you might want to stop your case.
Not at all. I'm sorry. I wasn't sure when I would break in. I'm the attorney for Bank of New York Malone, and I was the one that had sent over the information.
And your name, sir, please?
Attorney Sam Mayler is on behalf of Bank of New York Malone. Madam Mayor, Mr. Councilman. So I would appreciate that. We'd like to move to have all those removed. We have had it under contract. I had misinformed the council last time. I thought that the sale was canceled. It was under contract since August of two thousand seventeen, and the buyer has signed a... An addendum to go through, and he still wants to buy it. Mr. Amador Panera would still like to buy the property. And we... The last thing we need is this lien removed, and then we can sell the property.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I thank you. Thank you, Counselor. The... I know the neighborhood quite well because I lived for ten years in a house right behind this one. Gone. And Mr. Bill Wright, the distinguished former general manager, the late Bill Wright, of general manager of the RJ, lived in that brick house directly to the north adjacent. So the area needs something there, and I think another home is appropriate to be put in there because we've got to clean up this lot. It is, in essence, there's no reason to leave it vacant if we've got somebody ready to buy and build. So therefore, in order to provide an incentive for this to happen fast, I'm gonna move to obey... Well, I'm gonna move that we assess the hard costs that have been incurred by the city and reduce the administrative or soft costs by ninety percent on this date. I don't have those numbers handy, but I'm sure that Vicky Ozuna has.
The out-of-pocket costs outstanding are one thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars. Civil penalties would be eighteen hundred and fifty-five dollars for a total of three thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. Then my motion is to abate the total of thirty-five hundred and thirty-one dollars from this total bill on this, and that it... To be paid within thirty days by the bank. Sam, can you make that deadline?
Yes, I can certainly make that happen. Yeah.
All right. Good. Thank you. That's my motion.
Okay. There's a motion on Agenda Item Forty-three. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. You do keep an eye on that for fire, I gather. I see so much wood there, and it just... I mean, it really looks like an invitation.
Yeah, we can go ahead and make sure that the cleanup crew goes by and takes a look and removes any debris that's around there.
Thank you.
Before it goes through. And just one final, small little matter. I just want to say hi to my little baby girls. They're watching this on TV. Got a one-year-old and a three-year-old.
A one and a three.
Yeah. Our baby Ariel, who's three, and Elodie, that's one. Hi, baby girls. It's Daddy TV. They think city councils Daddy TV. So just want to say hi to them.
And baby girls, let me tell you, Daddy won.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't remember. We should recall it.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Okay.
Go ahead while you're still ahead.
Okay. Agenda Item Forty-four. Report by public works staff to provide an overview update on staff efforts to develop a roadway transfer agreement between the city of Las Vegas State and Nevada Department of Transportation, NDOT. Wards one, two, three, four, and five, Port Six. You're not included, but everybody else. Good morning again.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman. Members of City Council. For the record, Mike Jansen, Director of Public Works. I wanted to start off today just by noting that I have a representative here from NDOT in case you have any specific questions for NDOT today. Mr. Bob Madewell is in the audience, and he'll be here to, again, address any questions you might have. Over the years, the city has taken over some NDOT roads for various reasons, and as history will show, I have a slide to show you this. The city has given some roads to NDOT, and the most recent ones for us was Main Street, Las Vegas Boulevard, and Eastern Avenue. They used to be NDOT state highways. They're now city streets. We took those over around two thousand and two, I believe. And what I wanted to show you today was a little overview of a proposal that we have on the table to do, if you will, a next round of transfers with NDOT. The roadway exchange that we have under consideration today is NDOT would relinquish Charleston Boulevard from the Two Fifteen Beltway to Boulder Highway, and there's a segment that would be excluded from MLK to Commerce Street. The reason for that, there's a couple of reasons. Number one, they always retain the segment of road that's under the freeway right of way because they need it for control of the interchanges. Also, there's a future Project Neon Phase Two that some folks may or may not be aware of, but it's in very far out years, and it would affect some of the area just east of... Right around near Western Avenue. And so they want to retain that area so that in that future phase, which is many, many years out, they still have the ability to do what they need to do. And then lastly, the Charleston Underpass was permitted to NDOT back in nineteen forty-seven, and it does not have transfer rights because it's such a very old agreement. So as part of what we're discussing today, that segment is not on the table, but the rest of the stretch is. Secondly, Sahara Avenue between Rainbow and Boulder Highway, this section also would have an exclusion. It would exclude the segment between Rancho and Tam, also known as the North Bridge Intersection. Similarly, that portion is within the control of the freeway interchange access, and there's also the Sahara Bridge that they want to retain right of way for maintenance of that bridge. Thirdly, Fremont Street, Eighth to Charleston. Some years back, when we did our first project in Fremont East, we took over this segment from Las Vegas Boulevard to Eighth. This exchange would give us the last piece that's remaining on Fremont. What we would relinquish to NDOT is Summerlin Parkway. Our current control on that stretch of the freeway is from Tenaya to the Two Fifteen. In fact, it's a little bit east of Two Fifteen where the county right of way begins associated with the Beltway. Here's just a little graphic, and I wanted to point out a couple of things. On Charleston Boulevard, you can see in red, that's the stretch where we would take both the north and south sides of the street because it's a hundred percent within the city of Las Vegas limits. You can see a portion way on the west near Wallapie where we would only be taking the north side, and that's because the south side is in Clark County limits. Clark County has an agreement underway with NDOT as well, and they would be taking that piece over. And then on Sahara, it's similar. We would be taking the north side only from Rainbow to just east of Decatur. And then from east of Decatur, almost all the way down to that Rancho section, we'd have both sides of the street. And again, it's following our current city limits. And then east of Tam, we would again just be taking the north side because the south side is in Clark County limits, and that segment is also going to be taken over by the county as part of a separate agreement with county and NDOT. And then lastly, that piece of Fremont, again, we would take both sides. And so just kind of graphically to show you a few details on the transfer, that's what that slide gives you. There's some interesting history. As we started looking into this, and I know, Councilman Coffin, we had some conversation about this in briefings the other day. In the nineteen forties, the city transferred Fremont Street to NDOT. In the nineteen sixties to seventies, over various periods of time, Sahara Avenue was transferred by the city to NDOT, as well as from the county. And then back in nineteen eighty-six, Charleston Boulevard was transferred to NDOT. So it's interesting how we've come full circle where we're looking at these roads today to take them back under city control. To point out, when those exchanges occurred over those periods of time in history, NDOT only took over maintenance from the curb to curb. They did not take over maintenance for sidewalks, landscaping, street lighting, traffic signals, or sewer and storm drain. So ever since on all these streets, we continue to handle the maintenance and operations of those elements of the roadway. The only thing we don't maintain is the paved area under the current situation that we have. So again, what we're proposing is NDOT would take...
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes, please.
Just a short question. I just realized in eighty-five, when we transferred the portions of... Well, several of these streets to the state, it was done by legislative action, at least the eighty-six action was. So I'm just curious, do we need to have the legislature next session ratify our action on this?
That's a great question, Councilman Coffin. I guess over the years, both NDOT was able to have a mechanism in place where if they want to transfer any of their roads to the local entities, the process is, it requires an interlocal agreement between the entity that's wanting to transfer, and then it also has to go to the state transportation board. And if both bodies, city council and a state transportation board, approve of the transfer, the transfer can move forward. I don't know the particulars of back in eighty-five where it was legislative action, but I'm told throughout the state of Nevada, NDOT has been entering into a variety of transfers, really throughout the state, for various reasons. So the proposed agreement, the basic terms is NDOT would take ownership and maintenance of Summerlin Parkway, including the pavement, the barrier systems, the landscaping, the lighting, the interchanges, the overpasses, and the underpasses. There's a number of bridges, large bridge structures along Summerlin Parkway, that they would take over that responsibility. And we would take ownership and maintenance of Charleston, Sahara, and Fremont, adding the pavement-related elements that we don't currently do on those three roadways. So really, for us, it's adding a stretch of pavement that we don't currently maintain. In Endot's case, it would be the entire facility along Summerlin Parkway.
Two questions, please, Mr. Jensen. One, if in fact we beautify our side of Sahara, and the county doesn't do theirs, is that going to create a problem, number one? And what is the liability exposure down the center of Sahara? Does our responsibility go to dead center on Sahara for any automobile crashes, accidents, et cetera?
Mayor Goodman, answer to that question. About six, seven years ago, we did the Sahara BRT in partnership with Endot, Clark County, and the city, when RTC received some tiger funds to do that transit project. And as part of that project, they added quite a bit of landscaping along Sahara, trees, some center median work, and there was an agreement in place where the county maintains the trees and elements on their side, we maintain the trees and elements on our side. As it relates to where the right-of-way begins and ends, it's actually right on that center line. And so, anything on the north center line would be ours, and anything on the south center line would be the county's. And so, as it relates to us trying to beautify any corridor when we're on those borders, it really comes back to having a good relationship with that other entity. We've got a lot of border projects with North Las Vegas and with Clark County, and generally speaking, from public works standpoint, we've developed a good relationship. So when we have a project, we usually sit down and try to identify the merits of the project, and we hope that, you know, both of us can see the right way to go.
And how does that work, if I may, on synchronizing the lights, which I know we've done a great job on Charleston, if you stay at the speed limit, and if the people in front of you move, you can just keep going, going. Sahara's been difficult. Is that coordinated also between the city and the county going forward?
Mayor, great question. So all of the traffic signal coordination plans are managed from the regional entity, the RTC. They have a group called the Regional Transportation Commission, FAST, Freeway and Arterial System of Transportation. And to remove any jurisdictional lines where maybe one entity would prefer to time it a different way, FAST coordinates the signals for the benefit of the entire region. The entities maintain the signals, but the coordination is handled by the RTC. So as it relates to Sahara, we actually maintain every traffic signal today on Sahara from Boulder Highway to Walupi. Those are all under city control, where we maintain them. So if a car hits a pole, we fix it. If a light goes out, we fix it. But the actual timing coordination on the corridor is handled by RTC FAST. Sometimes there's an outage, and a lot of times we rely on citizens to say, hey, you know, I noticed from point to point, those lights seem to be out of sync. We pass that information on to RTC, they investigate and try to get the coordination better. And as you noted, Charleston has some pretty good coordination.
Yes.
Sahara with the bus line on it, it sometimes is a little more challenging.
Thank you. Councilman Anthony, had a comment or question?
Thank you, Mayor. So, we're talking about Summerlin Parkway here, which is, according to this PowerPoint, is pretty much all of Southern Summerlin Parkway is going to be transferred. So, really, that freeway is kind of the gateway to the west. It's a gateway to Ward Two, it's a gateway to my ward, Ward Four, to a certain degree, Ward Six. And a lot of people drive that, and they're, a lot of people are very, they want to be proud of driving on that freeway because it sends them to their home, and I want to be proud of the roads that I drive in when we get into the western part of the valley. So, I mean, every once in a while, I'll either see it, or someone will call me and say, hey, you know, Summerlin Parkway could use a little sprucing up, it was a high wind last night, there's garbage all over the place, and can you get out there and clean it up? And I called our city, and they're out there the next day, and they're cleaning it up, and it looks great. So, I guess what I, what I need to hear today, and I guess I need to hear from Bob, is there going to be that same commitment from Endot when our constituents, or myself, or Councilman Soroka, call up and say, hey, you know, Summerlin Parkway could use a little sprucing up over here, over there, that they're going to respond, just like our city folks respond. That's going to be a big deal for me. So, hi, Bob, if you could, with your permission, Mayor, I'd like to hear from Bob and what his last name is and who he is.
Absolutely, please, and welcome. Thank you for coming.
Good morning, Mayor, and councilmembers. For the record, my name is Bob Madewell. I am the Assistant Chief of Planning for the Nevada Department of Transportation, and I apologize, I had a head cold, so bear with me. I manage a section that deals with road relinquishments and a variety of other things, specifically these relinquishments today. I work quite often with our maintenance folks on when we do road transfers. So to answer your question the best I can at this time, there's still some negotiation that we're going through to talk about, the maintenance that's currently happening there versus whether we want to continue with some of the agreements that are already out there, and we just manage those agreements, part of which is the maintenance that you're talking about, or that cleanup process. I could not stand here today and tell you that, yes, if you call today, we'll be out there tomorrow, but we too recognize the importance of Summerlin Parkway, or we would not even be in these discussions with the city at this time. We recognize that the beauty of the road, the area that it contains, and we too don't want to have those kind of issues as well. This is kind of a large step for us to take such a road in this manner, so we're trying to commit ourselves and our resources to doing the right thing here for the citizens as well as for Endot. So, it's the best answer I can give you at this time.
That's good, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Soroka has some comments or questions, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to echo Councilman Anthony's comments about the importance of the gateway to the west. It affects the county and the city as well. And we know that Howard Hughes Corporation, who does a wonderful job developing Summerlin, rated the best master plan community in the country, or at least in the top ten, depending on the year. So, as we go that way, one of the great things the city has done, Mike, is maintain wonderful landscaping along the roadway as we enter that part of our city. And it's very dramatic, and it really represents the community. And I noticed in your slide, you actually have dollar figures associated with that. And you've done a great job, and the community really appreciates that out there. So similarly, to Endot, Bob Madewell, thank you for being here, would like to hear your comments on your willingness and ability to maintain this minimum standard of landscaping on the roadway, and as it grows, I know we'll also be expanding it by doubling the size in the near future. The people of Ward Two would like to hear what you have to say about maintaining that minimum level of wonderful landscaping or more.
Sure, absolutely. Again, Bob Madewell. So, some of the discussions that I'm having with your staff now, and I might add, your staff has been exceptionally professional through this whole process. I do commend them for that. We've had discussions at length about the volume and the type of landscaping that you have there. It definitely stands out. And so, our commitment to that is, we recognize that. We recognize that we're taking on a large volume of landscaping that we don't normally take on. As you, as you see in our freeways, we try to do the minimal, light-duty landscaping and that type of thing, but, so we recognize that, and if we move through this process, and it's voted on both by our Transportation Board and our director, who is supportive of this action, I can tell you that we will take that on with the understanding, we're taking on that landscaping that's there with the, with the ability to try to keep that as picturesque as it is today. There's no intention on our part to let that go, nor is there any intention for us to reduce it in any way and try to change that philosophy out there. We recognize that you have a wonderful community out there. And so, we have a state landscaping committee that has already started to look at these processes that Mike has brought up, Mr. Jensen's brought up, and so, they're already starting to look at what it's going to take us to maintain and keep that level for you. And then as we look into the future, as Michael will eventually get to, with the potential widening for that road, certainly there will be some changes at that time. It's unknown at this point what that will be, where that, those lanes certainly would fall. But the landscaping is going to try to be maintained the best it can today because we do, again, recognize what you have there and the importance of that to your community.
And so, I just want, thank you for that, appreciate that a lot, and I appreciate your acknowledgement of the importance. And the dollar values that were just estimated out here were roughly $200,000 to maintain the current landscaping a year, and roughly $125,000 for water usage a year. So we're going into this knowing that, and that I appreciate your commitment to, when you do widen the road, some of the landscaping will be impacted clearly, to return, restore that same kind of grandeur when you're, when you're done. And I appreciate your commitment to do everything possible to do that. Thank you.
Councilman, a couple of points I'd like to make on some of your comments. We went to great lengths to make sure Endot was fully aware of the cost of maintaining the landscaping. We in fact got copies of multiple-year reports of the water bills, so they knew exactly how much the water cost over a five-year period. We gave them copies of our current landscape maintenance contracts, so they know how much it costs to maintain it. And what we're also going to incorporate in the agreement is some language that just spells out how we currently maintain it in terms of, twice a year, the trees are fertilized, or X number of times a year, the trees are pruned. We're going to try to put it in so that they recognize, this is how we've been maintaining it, and our expectation is that they'll continue to maintain it so that, really, in talking with our community, they won't see any difference. They won't know there's any change because we're trying to make it as consistent as possible.
Thank you for that, Mike. And just a question that just popped into my noggin, are any Fry dollars available for that kind of a thing for Endot as they move forward?
Good question, Councilman, and I've got a slide where I'm going to kind of walk you through some of the future costs associated with the maintenance and operations, and I think I can answer your questions as that slide pops up.
Thank you.
And before you go ahead, if I might, Councilman Coffin had a comment or a question.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I don't want to delay this. I want to say I'm very much endorsing the project, particularly the leg from Eighth Street on Fremont to continuation down at Five Points where Charleston gets there. Because every time, I know this council would think about it, every time we've had to make a change in the road and/or on a project right abutting the road, we've had to seek permission of the Endot. And this is a fast-growing area, downtown project owns a lot of land, but they're not the only people that own land on Fremont. And every time, we get delays because it's, it's just the way it is. You have to exchange correspondence and get approvals from the state to do things, and so I'm sure this will speed affairs up for our fast-developing Fremont Street area. So, thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, wait, one more question, please.
I just wanted to agree with what he said because, of course, we have Charleston and Sahara, and there are many times, there are just little things we need to do, and it takes a long time because we have to go to Endot and do all, you know, the official steps that you need to take. So I do think that this will help us a lot as far as Sahara and Charleston areas are concerned. Thank you.
Okay, please, continue.
Yeah, the last point on this slide was just that each agency is responsible for securing funding for maintenance and any future construction activities that may relate to widening, really anything having to do with these roads. Each agency is responsible for securing that funding. Just a quick snapshot on the costs, so Summerlin Parkway today costs us about $1 million a year to maintain it. But there's two very large capital investments that the corridor is going to need at full buildout of the community. And in the shorter term, years three to five, we anticipate most of the older pavement on that corridor is going to need a rehab, about a $6.2 million injection into the roadway. And then, years six to 15, the Parkway was always sized by right-of-way and width to accommodate going from four lanes today to eight in the ultimate configuration. And we've done some estimates on what it would cost today to widen that from four to eight lanes. It's about an $83 million jog because you have to do some widening at a few bridges. And so, there's a long-term liability of about $89 million on Summerlin Parkway, coupled with about a million a year that we spend on maintenance. And when you look at the roadways, they cost more to maintain because there's more of the paved area. So, we've estimated that to do the transfer of the roadways to the city, our street rehab costs will go to about $4 million a year. And we have one shorter-term capital investment, the stretch from Rainbow to Rancho is going to need a rehab probably within years one to five. And so, when you look at it that way, I think what we've tried to do, working with Endot, was come up with a transfer that's kind of equitable where, while our annual costs go up, we shift that longer-term cost to Endot on the widening side, and the numbers get pretty close when you look at it over a 30-year period. And so, again, trying to look at both, both teams, we're both trying to give each other roadways that are in pretty good shape. Endot just completed a rehab on Charleston. Councilman, I know, from Beltway to about Rainbow, that was just redone, really nice road. Similarly, we're doing some work on Summerlin Parkway, and we truly are trying to give each other a set of keys that are as good as can be before we complete the transfer. So here's really the benefits, really, what is it, why should we enter into this? Well, it's certainly going to be easier to facilitate existing city maintenance activities. We have to get a permit from Endot when we change a street light, or we have to get their approval, so sometimes the restrictions are very challenging, whereas if it was under our control, we would be able to have more flexibility on how we do some of our work. It allows us to be more responsive, I think, to our citizens when it comes to pedestrian safety and capacity improvements. There's a lot of locations where we've wanted to add flasher systems, crosswalks, things of that nature, and if we want to do it, we can just go do it, whereas currently, much like Councilman Coffin said, we'd have to go through the permitting process up through Carson City, and it's just more time. So, it gives us the ability to be more responsive. Developers will tell you they would love to have this transfer occur because it's one less permit for them to get. On every project, they have to pull a permit from us, plus Endot today. This would eliminate that need. So from a development and redevelopment perspective, it'd be a positive change. We would have more control over future transit investments. I know Councilman Soroka, we've talked about bus turnouts. We like bus turnouts, but in order to do them on Charleston or Sahara, we have to go through that long permit process. We could just go do them ourself with this transfer. And then also, for Endot's perspective, they get to stay in the freeway business, they're great at the freeways, and they really want to move towards giving the local entities control over the surface streets. So really, it kind of helps both sides of the fence out in terms of maintenance and operations. So, next steps, really, here's where we're at today. This was an overview for you all. Endot's now going to turn and do a very similar presentation to the State Transportation Board, and then if the feedback is positive from both sides, we'll have a legal agreement drafted where our city attorney and the state attorney general will review it, and if all goes well, we'll be back with an agenda item towards the end of the year to formally approve the transfer of the maintenance, and that's maintenance and operation transfer. About two years later will come the actual hard right-of-way documents. There's a tremendous amount of right-of-way documents to transfer. So the, the current proposal with Endot is, give us two years for all of our staff to work on all those documents, but starting ideally by the end of this year, we'd have control over the roadway. So, that's pretty much my presentation, and if you had any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Very, very good news for us all, I'm sure. And we never know who to call about anything, but always Jorge, in times past, a light was out, there was a problem, and, oh my. So, thank you, Mr. Jensen, thank you for coming down. Take care of your cold, we appreciate it. And with no further questions, this is a report only, and we look forward to the next time you'll be visiting us.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we are going to move on to Agenda Item 45, Report by the Department of Fire and Rescue, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Medical and Community Services That Offer Residents Alternative Support and Assistance to Varied Circumstances, Including Community Paramedicine, Crisis Response, Tame and Community Health Improvement Programs in the City of Las Vegas. Reference all wards. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, members of the council. I'm Willie McDonald. I'm the extraordinarily proud fire chief of the City of Las Vegas, and it's always a pleasure for me to be in front of the council to share with you the great things that the men and women of Las Vegas Fire and Rescue are doing for our community. And today is no different than that. I think the thing that, in my mind, that separates Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, and I believe it is the best fire department in the country, from many others, is the constant search for better ways to provide great services to our community, and that's what our folks do on a day-in-and-day-out basis. And that has really come to pass in some of the things that you all have agreed to or approved today, and things that we are going to ask you to approve in terms of better ways that we can provide services to our community. So in the course of evaluating the ability to provide excellent emergency and community services to our community, we've been researching and evolving our delivery options in the department, and developing and expanding, and I think this is really important. We've been expanding new and traditional partnerships that we have had without, with other stakeholders in the community, and we've really been focusing ourselves on traditional, on matching the right resource with the right patient, and making sure that the citizen has the best opportunity to benefit from our support. So I want to give you an overview of the things that I'm going to be presenting today. I want to talk a little bit about our current deployment system, our network of fire stations and resources within those fire stations, talk about the medical history that we've had in terms of how we provide services today as opposed to how they were wanted and desired in the past, trends in the provision of, provision of services, and then I want to talk about some programs that we have been implementing over the course of the last couple of years, mobile integrated healthcare, the- of the last couple of years, mobile integrated healthcare, the partnerships that are involved in that, the legislation that our folks have provided leadership in getting those passed, and the components of our mobile integrated healthcare program. And then share some expectations, some experience, and some outcomes. So this is our network of resources that we have out in the community. And I'm happy to say that we opened Fire Station 103 on April 4th. It was a wonderful opportunity to be able to do that for the community, and the community came out in force to welcome the firefighters back into that area. And so we're very proud to have been able to do that. We have throughout our community 21 fire stations. And every single one of those fire stations, we have prehospital care professionals on every unit. We have at least two advanced life support units in every one of our stations. In some cases, we have more than that just based on the activity level and the needs and demands of that area. We've implemented a few additional kinds of resources to better provide service and matching the right resource with the right patient. And one of those is our intermediate life support unit that we have. It's two firefighters on a very small unit that go out and provide services to lower priority emergencies, take care of those, and keep our other units that have more capabilities available to respond to additional incidents that are occurring within the city. Again, I want to just say that the dedication of our folks has really given rise to the ability to us to find better ways to provide services and also different ways to provide those services. We are the primary provider of prehospital care services in the community. And we also, because of that, in our interaction with the community, we have the ability to provide some additional services to our community. And we do that in a variety of ways. We primarily have in terms of our emergency response, a single transport unit system that's different than the way it was a couple of years ago. And so just either we go to the call or AMR goes to the call, the transport unit. The system is based on our priority medical dispatch system, as you remember, a few years ago. We took the steps to become an accredited center of excellence. Our dispatchers, our communication specialists took the lead on that and have done some amazing things in order to get us to the point where we are today. And it's opened up some doors for us to be able to provide additional resources. So we dispatch our transport units on primarily the most seriously ill and injured patients. AMR transports the lower acuity patients. And we can do that with real time because all of our units have global positioning on them and it's connected to our CAD system. So we know where the closest units are throughout the city. And in fact, our communication center is a regional communication center. We provide services for North Las Vegas as well as Clark County Fire. The real benefit of that is that we know where all of the resources are for all of those organizations and we know the status of those. And so we can ensure that the very closest unit or units respond to the incident. And that just cuts down on time and that provides better service for our residents. And then mobile integrated health is a way that we can provide better services, or at least the services that someone needs that aren't putting them in the back of a rescue and taking them off to an emergency room. We have found that-
Excuse me, but I don't understand what mobile integrated health means.
So that's really what I'm going to be presenting.
Oh, okay. I think it sounds good.
But thank you. So, this is our forecast of what we were seeing in our organization in terms of the call volume. This is going back to 2010. And what we were seeing was that our call volume was increasing every year. So if you look at 2010, we went on about 87,000 emergency requests for service. By the time we got up to 2016, that was 115,000. So that represents a 35% increase in call volume in our organization, in our department. And what we recognized is that we couldn't keep up with that demand. It just was overwhelming and the amount of resources that we would continue to need to be able to provide those services were becoming more and more costly and our ability to keep up with that just wasn't forecasted. We found that many of our residents had chronic issues and in some cases that their issues weren't medical at all. And so they needed some other sorts of assistance. We had multiple occasions where we would respond to the same patient more than one time in a day. And in fact, we have 15 patients that we responded to in 2017 that accounted for 700 calls for service. Fifteen people accounted for 700 calls for service. So we would see some folks over and over and over again. And we really weren't making their situation any better. And we had a very high incidence of overwhelming or exceeding the capacity of some of our individual units. And so we really had a concern about that. And that also makes them unavailable for other more serious incidents that may occur within their area. And so in our, setting our key performance indicator for Results Vegas and in reaching out to our community and talking to them about the kinds of things that they felt like we really needed to be able to provide, the overwhelming message that we heard from our community is we want you to be available when we need you. We want you to have the resources available for us when we need you for those serious critical emergencies. And so one of the performance measures that we identified as a result of that was to reduce fire and rescue calls for service by capita by 5%. Now, that might sound like we're trying to get out of work. What that meant was is we wanted to make sure that we were sending the right resource to the call and we were going to calls that we should be going to. The impact of going to calls that we don't need to go to or we shouldn't be going to is that that unit may be unavailable for something that happens right there next to the fire station and we aren't available to respond to that call. So someone from a further distance has to go. That call in, that adds to the time and that probably will add to the poor outcome that will occur from that incident. We really wanted to align the right resource with the right need. And so that's been a focus of our attention over the last couple of months. And I believe that the first opportunity that I had to be in front of the council was to introduce a partnership that we have with the University of Nevada, Las Vegas. It's called Community Health Improvement Program. Back in 2013, I introduced that to the council and it really had to do a lot with people with chronic needs or maybe even social needs that we were responding on. And really, the only resource that we had at the time was put them in the back of a rescue and take them to an emergency room. And we'd probably see them again, in some cases, maybe not that day, but that week. So we really weren't solving that problem. So what we did in this partnership is we are able to have access to master's degree-level social service students from UNLV. They do internships with us throughout the year. And when one of our crews goes on a type of call that the person needs some other kind of service, whether it might be access to a social service that they have available to them but they don't know about or they don't have the ability to get to it, or they have some long-term chronic, maybe substance abuse problem or something else, our firefighters flag those patients or identify those patients. And then we send out someone from CHIPS to go and meet with them and try to assess what kinds of services are available to this person that we can provide that will help get them out of the 911 system, but get them the services that they need. So that has been something that we've had as a resource that our firefighters generally use very often when they find this kind of a person.
And if I might, Chief, who picks up that cost?
Well, the cost is, in terms of the CHIPS program or the CHIPS students, it's a partnership. So UNLV provides those students to us. There's no cost there. We provide the supervision and oversight. And I'm proud to say that when CHIPS started, we started off with, I believe it was three students. And it's grown now to we have about 20 students. Some of them are social services students, some of them are nursing students, some of them are pharmacy students. And we have a full-time coordinator now that we pay for through a grant. So we're able to manage that program essentially through services outside the general fund and through this partnership that we have with UNLV.
And are we also, if I may, Chief, coordinating with community neighborhood services? Because I see Kathy Thomas Gibson back there. And so that we're not being duplicative in the services. I mean, are we working together so neighborhood or community services knows what's going on and who these 15 might be?
Yes, very closely with neighborhood services and in fact, all of the stakeholders that we can find that have provide services in our community. We work very closely with those folks because we aren't really the right service for everyone. But we might be able to connect someone with that person or that agency. And we also might be able to be an advocate and help break down some of the barriers that they may have in connecting with that service and make sure that we get that service for that individual.
And so would those people then be calling 211 rather than 911 or whatever they would be calling thinking they need fire and rescue?
211 is a great resource that we use, our CHIPS program uses, and that we point people to that maybe don't know about it. And so that's a service, that's part of what we have as a resource that we can provide as a partnership and to make sure that people have those services available or maybe they didn't know about it. So yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
I also wanted to just mention our community risk reduction program. That's run by our fire prevention folks. And this is really an approach to identify hazards in our community, primarily our areas where we have more mature buildings in stock that we can get into and we can make sure that people are living in a safe environment and that we can help correct violations in advance of something happening in that unit. Our folks have been out now in many of the multi-residential facilities across Wards 1, 3, and 5 and spent a lot of time with the management and the owners of some of those properties to improve the level of safety that folks are living within and to make sure that we can provide some great education for people so they can minimize the hazard that they might have in their house that they didn't know about. So that's a program that we've also started to improve the level of safety throughout our community. And then of course, our major goal of our medical services program is to improve the survival from sudden cardiac arrest. So what is mobile integrated health? Well, it's something that we recognize that people want medical services differently or people need different services that they may have available to them and they don't know about. Or people just can't get through the navigation needed to access the service that they need. And so we've identified that and we've been working on ways that we can provide different methods of service, more cost-effective service to our community. And we can deal with some of these chronic conditions, substance abuse, mental illnesses, homelessness, and other barriers that people might have to getting services that they really need. And so what we've tried to identify is alternative services that they might have, not 911, not in the back of an ambulance into an ER. And we might even be able to treat some of these folks at home. Or we might not even have to go there. We might be able to take care of them over the phone. When they call into our dispatch center, we can transfer them to, we have a nurse in our dispatch center now that can provide them with some medical counsel over the phone and they may not need to go at all. So we recognize the need of this and we developed some partnerships. And a couple of things I wanted to tell you about that our folks have been involved in in terms of trying to provide better services is that we develop partnerships on trying to change the law that would allow for our paramedics to go out on like formerly like doctors used to go on house calls. So we had to get the law changed here in the state of Nevada. That wasn't something that our paramedics were authorized to do. But through efforts of our folks, the leadership our folks provided and partnering with all the other prehospital care stakeholders in the valley and Southern Nevada Health District, we were successful in having Assemblymember Oskerson sponsor some legislation for us in the 2015 legislation that now allows for community paramedics to be a part of any community that their council approves. So we can, instead of on an emergency basis, we can schedule visits to someone that we know in our community has some chronic concerns. And we can go out and see those folks on a one-on-one basis, spend lots of time with them and provide them with the assistance, make sure they know how to take their medications, make sure that they have their medications, make sure that they're not, have some other kind of lifestyle things that are creating part of the medical concerns that they have, and give them more hands-on assistance in a more cost-effective way.
Are they exempted from exposure to liability?
They have the same protections as do our paramedics and through our system that we have through the state statutes.
Umbrella, okay.
Okay.
Mayor?
An additional thing-
I hear you, but I don't know where I hear you. There.
Right here. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Chief, a question for you. How successful has that been? I didn't know about that. And I think that is a tremendous resource that our community probably is not aware of. And now, I don't want you to get inundated with people, you know, calling up about everything that you probably should respond to, but I think that's a very amazing program that you guys have started.
Well, it's a program that we're going to be bringing to you to approve. It is something that, it's been a little bit of a road to get it to this point, but first, the legislation had to allow for and provide for paramedics to be able to provide services that weren't through an emergency. And so that occurred in 2015 at the legislature and that was approved. We then had to go through rulemaking for, so the regulatory process being offered by community paramedic. So that took us through the Southern Nevada Health District. We presented then this concept to our city manager's office this year through the budget process. And he has recommended through the budget that he presented to you that we consider this program and we start to train some of our folks to be able to do it this next fiscal year. So that's something that, it's brand-new, so we're not inundated yet, but it's something that if you approve that and if you authorize us to have a community paramedic program, then we will start to provide that service with single paramedics going out and seeing people at their homes or other places. One other thing I wanted to tell you about, something that you did approve today, is our crisis response team, our pilot program with the state of Nevada. We have some folks that were invited to make a presentation at the Governor's Commission on Behavioral Health a couple of years ago. And what they presented was a first responder service by which we would have paramedics go out to people with non-acute medical concerns but had some behavioral health issues, some mental health issues. And so that presentation resulted in the state approaching us this last year and offering us a $1.9 million grant to stand up a crisis response team. You acted on that this morning during the consent agenda and approved that agreement between us and the state of Nevada. So what we will do, hopefully by November, excuse me, by May 1st, is we will put into service a crisis response unit that will respond to mental illness or mental health patients throughout the city. They'll have a paramedic, an EMT, and a licensed clinical social worker assigned to each one of those units. One of the other pieces of legislation that had to be changed was the approval of paramedics to medically clear mental health patients so they didn't need to go to an emergency room. Again, our folks were a part of the leadership in that legislation. And so those three things will allow us now to respond with first responders to people with mental illness concerns that don't have a acute medical problem and to be able to provide services to them, not take them to the hospital. And we've also secured an alternative behavioral health destination that we will be able to take those folks to. We also were able to get the regulatory, through the regulatory process of Southern Nevada Health District, the approval to put a nurse in our dispatch center. And there were a couple of things that were required before we were able to do that. One of them was we had to be an accredited center of excellence through the International Association of Emergency Dispatch. So after we were able to achieve that status, then we were able to implement or install software that provided for us to be able to have a nurse in our dispatch center. And so someone may call 911 for services and that person would be redirected from our dispatch center to the nurse that's in the dispatch center. And that has resulted in a reduction in the number of calls that we've gone on because they're able, we have now the different categories that are available to us that we don't send emergency responders on. We have the nurse talk to them on the phone. We might dispatch a lift to them, have them go to an urgent care center or go to even their own physician and not tie up an emergency response unit on that call. So this is really the slide that explains the components of our mobile integrated health system. And I wanted to go through these with you, Council, because this is what we've been working on since 2013. And we've recognized that not everyone benefits from being put in the back of an ambulance and being taken to an emergency room. But for those patients that we need to do that with, those are the patients that have severe respiratory distress or cardiac-related chest pain or blunt force and penetrating trauma or severe allergic reactions. Our folks are very good at that. We're the best at providing emergency medical services. And so the 911 system works well for that and we're located throughout the community such that we can get there very quickly. Your question about Nevada 211, Mayor, that is a resource that we use. We make it available to our folks. We tell people about it in the community. And that really connects residents with free information and links to important services and volunteer opportunity and essential social services and referrals. and volunteer opportunity and essential social services and referrals. Our emergency nurse call line was something that we implemented at the end of last year and that's been very successful for us. It's allowed us to reduce the number of emergency responses that we have for the lower priority calls. And it also provides patients with direct contact with a nurse within our dispatch center to provide them with assistance and consultation right over the phone. Our community, our crisis response team program is something, again, that I say that you guys approved this morning. That's a new component of our mobile integrated healthcare program. And that's something that, as I say, will start very soon, May 1st, I hope. And that'll be able to provide an ability for us to provide folks with non-medical services, behavioral health services, and take them to the right destination, not to an emergency room. I wanted to give you just a couple of scenarios that kind of help better illustrate the kinds of patients that I'm talking about here. For our CHIPS program, I give you an example of an 85-year-old male who lives alone on a limited budget. His sight's worsening. He has poor hearing and balance. He called nine one one, this is an actual one of our patients, he called nine one one 40 times in a year. Frustrated the crews because he usually refuses to go to the hospital. What we have been able to do for him is to connect him with one of our CHIPS folks that can provide him with fall assessment within his home, coordinates with his personal care, primary care physician to enroll him in physical therapy for balance and strength training, and an assessment of his medications because maybe some of the medications that he has, the multiple medications he has, may be causing him to have poor balance and the reason that he's falling. Now, we wouldn't have that kind of time and that kind of interaction with our emergency response, but through our CHIPS students, we're able to provide that service to our community and get those folks out of the emergency system. We are asking you to consider approving us to provide community paramedic services. And as I had mentioned before, those folks would be paramedics with additional training that are placed on a unit by themselves and would go out and see people on a scheduled basis, like making house calls. And an example of somebody who would really benefit from that is our, our patient, a 47-year-old female with diabetes, high blood pressure, and kidney failure. She takes 12 different prescriptions a day. She receives dialysis three times a week. Limited budget, she's on disability. She calls, she called nine one one 50 times its past year because missing her dialysis appointments and her lungs fill up with fluid. We transfer to the hospital and she comes right back. We're really not helping her much. But if we were able to send a community paramedic out there, we could address a lot of these needs and help provide education for her and assistance for her to get the right meds and have her meds evaluated and as well make sure that she understands the things that she needs to be doing in her home to prevent her from continuing to have concerns that call, that she needs to call nine one one. It really is all about the navigation, making sure that people have the resources available to them and they know about them and they can access them and we can provide that assistance. So what's being proposed, and I say we've been doing this over time, we already have our CHIPS program in place. What you did also approved it this morning, the expansion of our CHIPS program, which will provide that social services person on our first responder crisis unit so that we'll be able to provide mental health assistance. We are providing the nurse call line and we'll continue to do that through our dispatch center. The crisis response team and community paramedics are the next phase of our community, excuse me, our mobile integrated health program. Our expectation is that we would be able to be in a better position to provide our folks with the right tools and the right resources to provide our community and our residents with the right resources that they need, not necessarily putting them in the back of an ambulance, but being able to provide them with longer-term assistance and also the right assistance that will help us be more efficient, will help us to reduce the number of incidents that we go on, help get people out of the nine one one system and provide a better community service for our department, I mean for our, for our citizens. That's really my presentation. What I really was hoping is to be able to answer any questions that you all may have about the different services that we've implemented or providing. And I also would like to request direction from you to bring back an item to explicitly authorize Las Vegas Fire and Rescue to provide community paramedics as approved by the Southern Nevada Health District. That's something that we will bring back to you later.
Oh, you will bring that back later?
Yes.
Okay, it's not in.
It's not here today.
Right now. Comments, questions? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
First, I, I want to say I've been fortunate enough to observe the CHIPS program in action and really they do a really fine job at, from what I've seen.
Thank you.
Secondly, if I have an emergency at home, do I call nine one one or two one one or three one one?
You call nine one one if you have an emergency at home. If you call nine one one and it, we determine that it's something that we, a service that we can provide differently, then we will assist you in getting that service.
All right, so I, as a person in need, don't make the decision of which number to call. I just call nine one one and they will direct me to three one one or to, two one one.
So nine one one, yes. Three one one, we also receive in our dispatch center. We direct that to our nurse. And most people who call three one one, they know that they're not an emergent, they don't have an acute concern, and they call three one one. They do a pretty good job of assessing that for themselves. So we have our nurse in the call center take care of those calls and that person will help direct you to the right service.
And who does two one one?
Two one one, you can call directly or we will assist you with that and our CHIPS folks help with that.
It helps you get to where I am.
Right.
And I need help.
Two one one, if I, I don't know who actually is controller, two one one anymore. It used to be United Way that would give the caller the variety of different services that are available and in the county and in the city.
That is correct.
So I don't know who's, who has control of two one one now? An independent, private company?
As I understand it, it's a partnership between United Way and the state.
City, okay.
Okay. And then what you're asking is to put the last two pieces onto it to make it a whole?
You approved the crisis response team pilot today, so we will get that initiated or started as quickly as we can. And then secondly, the community paramedic program is something that you'll need to approve and we would bring something back to you at a future council meeting to ask you to approve that.
I think the only problem I see is when people call three one one, it takes a long time to get an answer, is what they tell us anyway. But thank you very much.
And Councilwoman Fiori and then Councilman Coffin, sorry, I ditched that.
Thank you. So I just have to ask, because a lot of this has to do with our mental health and Metro has our largest mental health facility with their detention center. Are they involved with this?
I met with the mayor, excuse me, the sheriff about a month ago and shared with him this partnership that we have with this, the state and this program. And so he was very excited, was looking forward to be able to work with us, sees the need. And so it's something that we will be working directly with Metro on, as once we get it up and running.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. Billy, the, I may have missed it in your presentation, so I apologize if I went off somewhere else, but I wanted to know if you mentioned crisis intervention training, the CIT program, because I know that the police officers in town are all required to, they're getting their entire force trained and jail, jailers as well, but I'm curious if, that's Metro particularly. Are all firefighters and paramedics already crisis intervention trained?
Mayor Goodman, members of the council, Councilmember Coffin, no, they are not. We do, though, have a crisis intervention coordinator within our department, somebody that came to us through our CHIPS program. She was one of our first CHIPS students from UNLV. She's a permanent employee with us now. Through her direction and oversight and assistance, we have trained up about 30 of our firefighters in crisis intervention. And many of those folks are available to all of our fires on a day-in, day-out basis because it's not always just the big incidents, but sometimes it's life and sometimes it's things that are going on outside of work that people need assistance with. But we provide that service to our folks now and we have networks with Metro and Henderson and Clark County for their programs as well. So it's provided to all of our folks.
Well, I appreciate that, but I, I was thinking, I know firefighters typically have a different mindset when they come on a scene than police. There's a different tension level, there's all kinds of things. But Metro really has to be applauded for schooling so many officers in CIT, is what the shorthand is for crisis intervention training. I don't see any reason why we can't be doing that too at the same time for all of our firefighter paramedics. Certainly the paramedic-trained people are somewhat skilled in emergency situations, but not always in mental health situations. And the CIT training really helps a, a person in an emergency, or at least particularly under stress, to be able to quickly assess that this is a person who is not responsible or a person that would not normally respond to my commands or my requests in a conventional way. They might not be hearing what I say.
Right.
And so that, I think, is something which can be done and can be done in a course with this. I do not know how much that costs, but I do know that we all ought to have all our personnel CIT trained.
So we will, I'll look into how much it would be to train all of our folks. I know that we all have access and our crisis intervention administrator, as well as our peer support folks, have opportunities to spend time with our supervisors to assist them in the awareness and the knowledge of crisis intervention techniques and training so that they can look out for their own folks as well as, you know, have that available to them when they go out on incidents.
Thank you, Willie. I just, I have to, again, praise Metro for doing this because you'd be surprised how often it saves lives out there and, and takes some risk away from the officers once they recognize this. They know quickly how to change their approach to a suspect or a person who's just acting oddly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Soroka?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, big fan of Las Vegas Fire and Rescue and thank you for what you and your team do every day. And the name is interesting, it's Las Vegas Fire and Rescue. And today you were presenting a well-done presentation on just some elements of the rescue portion of what you do. And I would say most people don't realize the magnitude of the work that you do just in the rescue side, but it sounds like it's a lot more than rescue that you're doing.
Right.
So very well, but great job getting grants. We love hearing that grants are helping fund what we're doing, but appreciate that. But it sounds like what you've describing today is an excellent example of boots-on-the-ground ideas coming forward to enhance your ability to do your job in a more efficient way. And sometimes it sounds like just a little bit of financial investment upfront, hopefully from grants, allow us to save money in the long run and provide the right service to the community. And I really appreciate that because then while the rescue people are doing their thing, the fire people can be held in reserve for when they need to do their part of the mission and we're not overlapping and wearing out equipment and taking people's time away from what they need to be doing primarily. So this, I love what you're doing here.
Thank you, sir.
And I look forward to hearing the further reports that you have coming forward to us on how to continue to make our best-in-the-nation fire and rescue organization even better because we do want to be the safest, high-profile city in the nation. So thank you for your work, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
One last question. I'm not sure if it's for you or it's for Mr. Henley, but do we do anything through fire and rescue to recoup costs of the expense of responding? I know when my husband and I were in a car accident years ago, I think we got some bills for some type of different transports. And so for repetitive, unnecessary, is there anything that's, that we do budgetarily?
Mayor Goodman, members of the council, we are actually looking for a variety of ways to be able to recover some of the costs. In fact, I think it was in the 2017 session where we went to the state and asked them to adopt a program that would allow for us to have greater reimbursement from Medicaid. And you all approved an agreement and amendment that actually raised Medicaid reimbursement rates. We haven't seen the cash yet, the money yet, but we expect to see some money flowing back from the state through that process. We're also working to determine if there's ways that we could, healthcare is expensive and if you, if every time that you need assistance, you go to a hospital, that's the most expensive way that you can get it. But that's the only way right now that many insurance companies and Medicaid, Medicare pay us, reimburse us for the cost. An alternative to that would be to let us go out, treat the patient at home, if that's possible, and leave them there. But there is no reimbursement for that. And so we're working right now to try to determine or try to identify ways that we might be able to have that.
Excellent. Because I know Mayor Protem and I have been very vocal about pushing for medical reimbursement, Medicaid reimbursement rates, which are set by the states.
Yeah.
Not like Medicare, which is set federally and uniform across the country. And so I think as we go into the next legislature, we have to get even louder on this because it would seem to me for calls that maybe can be handled at home.
Right.
I mean, this is very valid and because Governor Sandoval had extended the coverage of Medicaid in the state, there certainly, there needs to be time and comeuppance now and we really need to be very vocal. And so, Mr. Adams, I hope that's on the agenda of one of the items that we work together with all the municipalities in the county to go, because every single fire and rescue, whether it's county or North Las Vegas or Henderson, whoever it is, going to have the same issues.
Right.
So I really, just to make sure that that's followed through. So at this point, we would have a motion to accept this report and acquiesce to your request.
I think, yes. If you would just provide me direction to bring you back an action that would approve community paramedics, that would be wonderful.
Couldn't have been said better. Mayor Protem, would you move to accept that and make a motion, please?
I move to accept the report and to move ahead and on the next step. Is that the correct wording you want?
I think that's good, right?
As, as it states in their documentation, is to auth.
As has been presented in the documentation to date at the council.
Authorizing staff to bring forward a, an agreement for community health services.
Authorizing the staff to bring forth a working arrangement with community health services.
Okay, good, okay.
Good.
That's the motion.
All right, that's the motion. And I won't ask her to repeat it. Please vote. And please post. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Okay, Agenda item 46, boards and commission discussion for possible action regarding the reappointment of nominee Mike Henley to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Mr. Henley sits in a seat designated as a Ward Two appointment. He's eligible and wishes to be reappointed. The options are to reappoint Mr. Henley or direct staff to bring forward an item to a future meeting to appoint a new member to fill the seat. And so, Councilman Soroka?
Thank you, Mayor. And I am proud to say I would like the highly vaunted and the highly regarded Mike Henley to remain on the board. And I move to approve item 46 that we retain Mike Henley on the Recreation Advisory Board.
Thank you very much. That was enthusiastic. Please vote. Whoops.
If we could.
Councilman Coffin?
On this, I certainly support the motion, but I think we, if it's the same Mike Henley I'm thinking about, the great sports writer, we need to correct his spelling for the official record, that sometime sooner or later, by removing the Y from the posted name.
We'll double-check the spelling.
Okay.
But I, I think it's correct.
Well, thank you.
We'll double-check. Thank you.
And when you check it, would you please advise Councilman Coffin as to its accuracy or not?
Well, absolutely, of course.
And all of us, so we know in the future when we speak with him. Thank you. Agenda item 47, discussion for possible. Oh, you didn't vote, so sorry. I said, Mayor Protem, if you'd vote.
I didn't vote.
I'm sorry. And I already announced post and I pretended. Now it's passed. Thank you very much. Agenda item 47, discussion, discussion for possible action regarding the appointment of nominee Kyle J. Stevens to the Regional Flood Control District Citizens Advisory Committee. Mr. Terrence P. Kane served in the seat from December '03 through, bless you, December 2017 when he stepped down. Terms on this board are two years with no limit to the number of terms that may be served. Procedure for this board requires appointment by the city council. Options are, appoint Mr. Stevens or direct staff to bring forward an item to a future meeting to appoint another nominee. Councilwoman Fiori, I understand you're prepared to make a motion.
Thank you so much. I'm actually very excited to appoint Kyle Stevens to the Regional Flood Control.
I'm actually very excited to appoint Kyle Stevens to the Regional Flood Control. He will make an incredible addition to our commission.
Okay. And that's your motion?
That is my motion.
Okay. There's a motion to approve Mr. Stevens. Please vote and please post. Thank you. That motion carries. Congratulations to him. Agenda item 48, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Brenda J. Williams to fill the unexpired term of vacant Ward Five seat in the Planning Commission. This vacancy exists due to the former Ward Five Planning Commissioner winning the special Ward Five election, which required resignation from this board. Procedure for this board is a recommendation by the appropriate member of council with the approval of council. Motions are to appoint Ms. Williams or direct staff to bring forward an item to a future meeting to appoint another nominee. Councilman Creer.
Thank you.
Your first motion, I guess.
Yes. It is. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And it is an honor to be in a position to nominate Brenda J. Williams as the Planning Commissioner for Ward Five. As you know, she was the former City Councilperson between Commissioner Weekly and Councilman Barlow. She is a long, long, long-time resident historian of Ward Five and is just a overall wonderful person, and is a president-nominated. So, I make a nomination to approve Brenda J. Williams as a Ward Five Planning Commissioner.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Brenda J. Williams to the Planning Commission. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries, and we welcome you back. Okay. Agenda item 49 has been obeyed? Or no?
I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Duh. Agenda item 49. Because Bill Number 2018-5 was obeyed by the Recommending Committee to be heard at their May 14, 2018 recommending meeting, I would move to obey this item to May 16, 2018 City Council meeting. And that's my motion. And would you please vote? And would you please post that?
I guess some of them supported that.
Well, everybody has supported it. Okay. Thank you very much. And now, that was 49. So... New bills. Items 50 through 55, Bills Number 2018-7 through 2018-12, will be heard at the Recommending Committee on Monday, April 30, 2018. City Attorney, would you please read these new bills?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bill Number 2018-7, An Ordnance Concerning the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, Special Improvement District Number 1485, Alt Drive Landscape Maintenance Fiscal Year 2019, Providing for the Payment of the Costs and Expenses of Maintaining Street Beautification Improvements, Assessing the Costs of Maintenance Against the Accessible Lots, Tracks, and Parcels of Land Benefited by Said Maintenance, Ratifying, Approving, and Confirming All Action Previously Taken, Prescribing Details in Connection Therewith. Bill Number 2018-8, An Ordnance Concerning the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, Special Improvement District Number 1516, Fremont Street Maintenance District Fiscal Year 2019, Las Vegas Boulevard to Eighth Street, Providing for the Payment of the Costs and Expenses of a Neighborhood Improvement Project, Assessing the Costs of the Project Against the Accessible Lots, Tracks, and Parcels of Land Benefited by Said Improvements, Ratifying, Improving, and Confirming All Action Previously Taken, Prescribing Details in Connection Therewith. Bill Number 2018-9, An Ordnance to Amend Las Vegas Municipal Chapter 6.95 Pertaining to Medical Marijuana to Conform to Recently Adopted Provisions of State Law, To Add That Chapter Provisions Regarding the Licensing and Regulations of Retail Marijuana Operations Consistent with State Law and to Provide for Other Related Matters. Bill Number 2018-10, An Ordnance Pertaining to Nightclubs and Restaurants with Alcohol, Amending the Licensing and Zoning Provisions Regarding Nightclubs to Update the Definition of Nightclub and Revise Applicable Licensing and Zoning Standards, Adjusting the Live Entertainment and Food Sales Provisions Pertaining to Restaurants with Alcohol and Providing for Other Related Matters. Bill Number 2018-11, An Ordnance to Amend Appendix F to the Unified Development Code, Title 19, to Establish a List of Permissible Uses for PD Zone Properties Located within Area 1 of the Downtown Las Vegas Overlay District and Provide for Other Related Matters. And Bill Number 2018-12, An Ordnance Providing for the Issuance of the City of Las Vegas of Its General Obligation Limited Tax Medium Term Various Purpose Bonds Series 2018-A and Its General Obligation Limited Tax Medium Term Various Purpose Bonds Fremont Street Experience Series 2018-B taxable in the Combined Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $43,880,000, Providing Details Concerning the Bonds and Project and General Tax Processes and Providing Other Matters Related thereto.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know they're, no, this is informational in a sense, so it is not needing a motion, but I just wanted to announce that Number 52, Bill 2018-9, is my bill on marijuana. I did not realize it was going to come out so fast from legal. And I have a major amendment to that, which I will give, have actually given to the planners so that people who are witnessing this understanding that it would be amendment, be presented, and I'll make it public. In any event, the bill will not be heard exactly. Well, it will be amended as soon as the Recommending Committee meets, if the Recommending Committee votes to amend it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, these new bills. Thank you, Ms. Pomachella. And the new bills, 2018-7 through 2018-12, are assigned to Recommending Committee Members, Councilman Anthony Coffin and Councilwoman Fiori. If any so designated or unable to attend, the Clerk's Office will coordinate finding substitutes as necessary at my direction, please, and thank you. This morning session of the City Council Meeting is now in recess, and we will reconvene at 1:00 sharp.
Okay.
Excellent. So, you can now meet, Councilwoman. Okay, everyone, we're reconvened. Councilman Anthony, I see you're out there. And we're going to start off with Agenda Item 27 and 28. And, okay. These are, these are the ones off the consent agenda, and so I'll read both of them into the record. Agenda Item 27, For Possible Action to Approve a Tavern License for a Change of Ownership from Landry's Seafood House Nevada Inc. to Nevada Restaurant Services Inc., DBA Bourbon Street Sports Bar Number 145 at 2610 West Sahara Avenue, Ward 1, with Councilwoman Tarkanian. And Agenda Item Number 28, For Possible Action to Approve a Restricted Gaming License Nevada Restaurant Services Inc., DBA Bourbon Street Sports Bar Number 145 at 2610 West Sahara, Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. To whom I am going to turn the microphone immediately.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to say that after consulting with the individuals who have placed this on the agenda and some other individuals had some questions, we are going to obey this for 30 days. That my motion is to obey for 30 days both items.
Okay. Can I, Council, may I take these in one, or do I have to take them individually?
You can do them both at the same time, Mayor.
Okay. There's a motion by Councilwoman Tarkanian to obey both Agenda Item Number 27 and 28 for-
May 16th.
May 16th. And that's her motion. If you'll please vote. We're patient.
You're good.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay. So, now we'll get back onto our agenda items, which take us, I think it was 56, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Hold on. I'm getting there. There it is. Okay. Agenda Item 56, For Possible Action. Any items the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protam, I will turn to you.
Mayor, Item Number 70 to 75. The applicant owner is Daniel Dubin. Applicant owner Jack and Hildy Lancaster, SUP 72411. Applicant owner Bruce and Tiffany Marler, SUP 72412. Applicant owner Marshall Family Trust, SUP 72413. Applicant owner Pama Joyner, SUP 72414. Applicant owner William and Sandra A. Gleason. Appeals of the Denials by the Planning Commission on Proposed Short-Term Residential Rental Uses at 150 North Las Vegas Boulevard Units 1604, 920, 2503, 902, 2315, and 1112. Abeyance is requested by the applicant to 51618.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, Mayor Protam. Thank you for letting me comment on this motion. They are all in Ward 5, the Ogden Tower, Ward 3, Ogden Tower. And I'm appreciative of the fact that they have asked for an abeyance. It is because of the unusual circumstances we're going through about short-term rentals that they have agreed to obey. I want to state, I think, for the record, so that people think if they obey, or if we ask them to hold off, because we're not settled on what we want to do with short-term rentals, that I don't want them to lose a place in a queue that might be formed. In other words, in that building, should we permit short-term rentals, and maybe there's a sufficient number permitted, then they should be considered in line and not necessarily have to take a backseat to somebody else who comes along at the last minute to take advantage of some change in the rules. So, that's more for these folks, but there are others that have expressed an interest. And I think we need to keep, we need to keep some order by maintaining a queue of who has applied, who has been here, and then who we've delayed.
And do you, are you suggesting that that be sequenced according to their application to the Ogden management or to the city processing and planning?
Well, the city processing and planning is all that we are concerned about. And I, I just want to make sure they know they're not guaranteed a short-term rental approval, but rather that the consideration would be, in some fashion, keeping with the, you know, the common sense rule, which is, you don't want to deprive somebody of having a chance if, in fact, they were first in line. Maybe they should be first in time, but there's no guarantee that anybody's going to get a permit here.
Okay. So, you really want the staff to keep a current list of who at least applied first in order?
They have it, Your Honor, but I think it's important for us to realize that as we do this, until we've settled on STRs, and there could be a long queue throughout the entire city, we just want them to make sure that they're not being treated unfairly, as opposed to other people who might apply.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you make that in the motion, Councilwoman? I got so involved. Okay.
I'm reading, yes. I did make the other one in a motion, and then he made the comment. So, now the second motion is Item 78 and 79, Varian 72574 and SUP 72575. Applicant L&amp;S Group LLC, Owner Paradise Plaza LLC at 2221 Paradise Road. And a request is made by the applicant to obey to 5218. And I make that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 57 to 61. Agenda Item 57, GPA 71561, and a request for a general plan amendment from O. Office to SC Service Commercial. Number 58, ZON 71562, and a request for rezoning from P-R Professional Office and Parking to C-1 Limited Commercial on .35 Acres, Southwest Corner of Charleston Boulevard and Westwood Drive. Agenda Item 59, VAR 71563, and a request for variance to allow 32 parking spaces where 38 are required. Agenda Item 60, SUP 71565, and a request for a special use permit for proposed drive-through use at the southwest corner of Charleston Boulevard and Westwood Drive. Agenda Item 61, SDR 71566, and a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 2055 square-foot restaurant with waivers for a two-foot-wide perimeter landscape buffer along a portion of the east property line where 15 feet are required, and eight-foot-wide perimeter landscape buffer along a portion of the west property line where 15 feet are required, a reduction of perimeter trees along- feet are required, a reduction of perimeter trees along the north and east property lines, and to allow the building to not be oriented to the corner and street front where such is required. The applicant owner is Charleston Land LLC on .69 acres to southwest corner of Charleston Boulevard and Westwood Drive. C1 Limited Commercial, and PR Professional Office and Parking Zones, proposed C1 Limited Commercial. Staff recommends denial. Planning Commission recommends approval of items, of all items. These are in Ward 1 with Councilwoman Tarkanian. Our public hearings, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Excuse me, Mayor. Real quick, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I need to make a disclosure from Council, if you don't mind, if you give me a minute, because of the Planning Commission. You know, this will be my first council meeting during which I hear planning items since my election. I was a planning commissioner prior to election to City Council, and I am not the first planning commissioner to be elected to the City Council. Some have chosen to abstain on planning items on which they voted as planning commissioner, and others have chosen to vote on such items. I intend to vote on all items that came before me as a planning commissioner. And if there is an issue with an item, I will address it on a case-by-case basis. And then I also just want to quote the NRS 2814.420, Section 4B, which says, "A commission must give appropriate weight and a proper deference to the public policy of this state which favors the right of the public officer to perform the duties to which a public officer was elected, appointed, and to vote or otherwise act upon a matter, provided the public officer has properly disclosed the public officer's acceptance of a gift, a loan, significant pecuniary interest, or commitment in a private capacity to the interests of other, of another person in the manner required by subsection 1. Because abstention by a public officer disrupts the normal course of representative government and deprives the public and the public officers, constitutes constituents of a vote in governmental affairs, the provision of this section are intended to require abstention only in clear cases where the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in the public officer's situation would be materially affected by the public officer's acceptance of a gift, a loan, significant pecuniary interest, or commitment in a private capacity to the interests of another person." So in a nutshell, I'll be voting on items that I face within the Planning Commission now in City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I guess it's my turn before we go forward, and I'm going to need advice from Council here. First of all, I know part of the, at least I believe part of the applicant ownership is a piece of it. Trish Truesdale worked for my office in the mayorship for five years.
Correct.
And of course, I've known the family for, since 1984, and had a close relationship.
Yes.
But then, on the other side, I live in the area and have been asked to vote against what they're asking for, so...
And you also appointed Mr. Truesdale to the Planning Commission as well.
Yes.
So, Mayor, we've advised you that since you have, since your independence judgment may be compromised, just given your extensive relationship with the owner of the property, and given the fact you live in the neighborhood, that you should abstain on this item.
Okay.
Unless you don't view your relationship with them to be that close, that, or the comments that you've received from your neighbors to be such that you feel that you...
Or if you feel the relationship affects your decision, is what I was told.
Correct. But you, it's at your discretion whether you feel the relationship is close enough for, because they are your neighbors, whether or not you'd like to vote or not.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Council and Coffin, you wanted to add something?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Creer for his disclosure and his proper way of handling these kinds of situations in advance with the declaration that on a case-by-case basis, there may be times when conflicts arise. In the 28 years I served in the legislature, the rule was to disclose. And then, if you had a financial interest, you disclosed. If a client or a close friend had a financial interest, you disclosed. Then you decide if your interest is any different than anybody else in a similar situation. You vote for something that might, or might not, help a casino if a casino happens to be a client of yours, but it's related to all other casinos, or all other landowners, all other marijuana dealers, I don't care. If it doesn't affect you personally, and it does not favor your client and/or friend above any other, then you declare and you vote. And that's as simple as it is, because the idea behind these rules is to stop corruption. And the main thing that stops it is the disclosure. I just think that's very important. You do it clearly and consistently, and, Mayor, and you've decided that you want to abstain on anything related to marijuana, and that's your decision. So, you know, it's, bless you on your decision. Personally, I wouldn't do it myself, but that's just another story. Thank you.
And there's no way to change one's mind going through after hearing discourse?
Once, well, the decision should be made now, Mayor, since you're going to be leading the meeting and leading the discussion, because if you abstain from voting, you're not to make any comments in favor of an application nor opposing an application. So it'd be best if you made a disclosure now and decide at this point whether you want to abstain or vote. So you'll probably need to make that disclosure, or that statement now.
All right. Because I have gone ahead and disclosed all my connections.
Correct.
And pressures that might be there.
Yes.
And so I'll go ahead and vote on each one. We'll see what happens.
Mayor Justin Michaels, 820 Rancho Lane, Suite 85. For Items 57 to 61, we had amended our application after our last request for an abeyance. We've been working with Mr. Lowenstein and Mr. Solis in the Planning Department, and there are a few items that they need in addition to what we've provided, one being items that can be recorded, like cross-access parking agreement. And unfortunately, there wasn't enough time for us to prepare some of those documents to be able to record. So what we're asking is we can obey the item to June 20, because then that will give us enough time to work with staff, so they have all of their requirements to be able to move forward.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask this is, I just want to collect our cards and make sure we're, there's nobody here. I have one, this is a public hearing item, so I'm going to ask whoever has, yeah, this is 57 to 64, or anybody else.
61.
Well, with this, this card from Tammy Ankenman on Payore. It is a public hearing. We're welcome, pleased, to come up, and anyone else who wishes to be heard on Agenda Item 57 through 61. And then I'm going to close public hearing, and we're going to go to staff, and then we'll go to Councilwoman. Any other comments you wish to make, Mr. Michael? Thank you.
Hi, Tammy Ankenman with 1113 Payore Drive. I am directly next door to the law office located at 2001 West Charleston, which is proposed, item number 57 through 61, the one where they propose, I just heard, to put a structure of a restaurant, and they have a egress on Westwood already. The plan was to put an egress-ingress on the Payore side. And I have spoken to Justin this morning. He says they're not doing that anymore. I have strongly, strongly, I want to put this on record, that will not fly on my street, nor will it fly next to me. That ingress-and-egress will be literally next door to my driveway. So when I pull out on the right side of the road, I'm going to be T-boning every car coming in and out of there. I already deal with John DeBella across the street and on the west side of my street, and he has two ingress-and-egresses. And the first one, closest to the Charleston corner, is the only one he's allowed to go in and out of, but they do exit out of the second one. And I've also run into his commercial trash can at night and dented my car, and I couldn't even get that fixed. He wouldn't entertain that. That was years ago. But I deal with his 18-wheeled big trucks coming in and unloading right down Payore Street. I've almost backed into them coming out of my driveway. I just, as a homeowner, as long as I live there, and I have an active family community that keeps up that neighborhood, that is a beautiful little cul-de-sac, I don't want that kind of traffic. We agreed to have a PR parking in the very back section closest to my house, so that we have a buffer between that and the one-story professional building. So I don't want that kind of, I know you people wouldn't want that next door to your house. As long as I'm living there, that's a problem. I just want that on record. Thank you.
Thank you. And there will be time, I'm sure, because Mr. Michael had talked about the main, these items.
He is talking to us.
So that's ongoing.
I just want to put it on record. He knows we're...
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on these items?
Mayor, our amended application is for a structure that is office retail, is no longer a restaurant building.
Okay.
So that should, that's part of the reason why we need additional time to make sure that we have everything that Mr. Lowenstein...
I'm sure probably the public comments may come from what's been long considered, and obviously you're making changes to things, which is probably why you're obeying some of this. So, but let me take the rest of the comments in your name, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jessica Sailor, 1208 Charmast Lane. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the, I wanted to give a couple of visuals for you as far as what this would mean as far as putting in an ingress-egress on Payore Street. I don't know if you can see this. Is there the overhead projector thing?
There is an overhead, and if you put it down, there you go, and they'll zoom in on it.
Can you see it there?
And then you can point.
Oh, it's beautiful. And look, there's the mic stand in the middle.
You'll point to whatever it is about which you're speaking. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So just to sort of orient you with this document, this is, I believe, the most recent plan that the developer has for this property, so Charleston would be...
Let me ask the question.
Yes.
Is this under change, too, or no? I mean, she's going to make her record.
No, ma'am, that is not the most recent plan.
Okay.
Okay. Do you know, is this, is this area still correct over here, the...
Those are all, those are all things that we're working on with planning, or with the Planning Department.
Okay.
To make sure that, so to...
Because here's Payore.
...change the layout of the property. So that's why we're asking for the abeyance.
So you're welcome on this diagram to make your comments, if you'd like.
That would be great.
But knowing that, obviously, it's under consideration for revision.
Okay.
But why don't you make your comments on, is this one dated?
Mayor...
If I could, Mayor?
Yes.
It seems as though the project has changed quite a bit, and I think the Councilwoman, or Mayor Protim, has a statement to read with regard to that change in this particular item.
I would like to say I understand why you might be confused, because there have been a lot of changes. You cannot tell from what's written in our agenda, or even from what's in our backup, exactly what the recommendation is from the applicant. And so I would like to make a motion, and this motion is regarding Items 57 to 61. The applicant has requested that these items be held in abeyance until June due to the significant changes that have been made in this project. And that's why you're asking some of the questions, and it has been changed, because there have been several significant changes. So based on the review of these most recent revisions by the Planning Department, and upon the advice of our city attorney's office, I feel this matter should be remanded back to the Planning Commission for their consideration and recommendation to the City Council on the new plans that are there. And in deference to the applicant's request to work with staff and to provide adequate time to make any additional revisions that might be over and above what have been made so far, and a lot have been made, or any modifications, and to meet noticing requirements, I move that Items 57 through 61 be remanded back to the Planning Commission to be heard at their June 12, 2018, meeting. And I believe we have sent this information to the applicant today, and the, and this is being done, because it's very difficult to ferret out exactly what's happening when you're looking at what's come in the past. So whatever has been coming, has come in the past, we will have the new information, and we can then vote upon that, and you can make your comments upon that. Because the other way, I think, is not going to work, because it's very, very confusing, and very significant changes have been made by the applicant.
Okay. I just want to also clarify that this was the plan that I received. I think, I think you sent it out two weeks ago? Is that right? I think around the 11th, there was, that that was the plan that was sent out.
I know that...
So if there's new changes that are going on, that's fantastic. We're, we appreciate that he's, you know, working with the neighbors.
This probably was the last one that was given out at any meeting that we had. And however, additional changes have been made since then that have gone to planning, and I've discussed with planning, and I've discussed with our attorney, and because they're so different from what you received in something like this, that's why I'm making the motion that I made.
Okay. So does that mean I don't get to finish speaking then today?
Well, what I'm going to ask, is I'm going to ask our attorney, because I do think it's an opportunity which may help for some new information, or something that a neighbor or a resident might have to offer, which might send off a light bulb, oh, don't forget about this. So I just wanted to ask Council, or does her motion preempt, and that's the end of it?
I mean, her motion preempts, Mayor, because I'm not sure if the, what the resident is indicating is wrong with this particular plan that's on the screen now, if any of that's even going to exist in their new plan. So it's kind of fruitless to make comments with regard to it. I mean, you could, you can maybe tell the applicant's representative with regard to what you want to change, but right now, it doesn't really make a lot of sense here.
Let me ask you another question. Knowing planning convenes usually in the evening, and is it appropriate for anybody who made a comment today, do they have, should they be at that Planning Commission, or what if their schedule precludes their being able to do so? Is this not her only opportunity to at least make a statement about her street or wherever?
She can appear at the June 12 meeting, or she can send a written, her written comments to the Planning Department and/or to the city clerk.
Got that?
Got it. Okay. And then my last request is, which I'm, just want to put on public record, is that Justin and Cornerstone also make an attempt to meet with the residents on Payore, just to work closely with them.
Good. You've made your comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I mean, I'm going to even just preempt the preempt, and just, anybody else want to make a statement that missed any of that? I'll close public comment. So we have a motion to send it back to Planning for the 12th of June?
Yes. And this motion is made, again, let me emphasize, because the changes have been so significant from what you had and what you're talking about now, we're going, on the advice of Planning Commission and City Attorney, it's being remanded back to the Planning Commission. And that was my motion.
Okay. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. And there you'll be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We move on to Agenda Items 62. 62 through 65. 62, ZON 71569, a request for rezoning for R4 High Density Residential, R1 Single Family Residential, RE Residence Estates to C1 Limited Commercial. Note the applicant's requesting O Office zoning rather than notify, rather than the notified C1 Limited Commercial zoning. Number 63 is VAR 71927, a request for variance to allow a 67-foot-wide lot width where 100 feet is a minimum required for a proposed C1 Limited Commercial lot on .17 acres in 1109 Westwood Drive.
Mayor, I would like to take these singly, if it's okay with you.
Okay. Absolutely. So we'll start, these are, I believe, I do have cards here. Also, these will be public hearings, so we have Doris Le, we have more. We have Scott Carlson, it's either Doug, I think Doug Laidlaw, Sean McLanahan, Elizabeth Giovinetti, Jessica Sailor, Claudio Lodo, Tixigerblum, and Streya Matilich, it looks like. I'm sorry if I blew that for you, but so be it. So let's start with the first item. We'll take them one at a time. And I read Agenda Item number 62. So let's go for that.
Excuse me?
And again, who you are and who the gentleman is you brought with you.
And, Mayor, and if they would please give the information as you have it today, because it's not the same as what we have in here.
Right.
So if you will do that, please.
Mayor Justin Michaels, 820 Rancho Lane, Suite 85. So you are aware, Item 62, as you read it into the record, has been amended... you read it into the record, has been amended, and we amended the zoning application to Office instead of C1.
Note, the applicant is requesting O Office zoning rather than the notified C1.
And we eliminated the GPA as well.
Okay.
Lou?
If I could, the clerk's office indicated that you just need to read all of those items in, since they are related items, 62 through 65. You'll take them separately in voting for them, but you'll need to read them all in so that we can hear them.
All right. So Agenda Item 63, V A R 71927, a request for variance to allow a 67-foot wide lot width where 100 feet is the minimum required for proposed C1 Limited Commercial Lot on .17 acres at 1109 Westwood Drive. Number 64, V A R 71928, a request for variance to allow a 67-foot wide lot width where 100 feet is the minimum required for proposed C1 Limited Commercial Lot on .17 acres at the southeast corner of Charleston Boulevard and Westwood Drive. And number 65, S D R 71570, a request for site development plan review for a proposed parking lot. The applicant owner is Shadow Land LLC on 3.27 acres southeast corner of Charleston Boulevard and Westwood Drive. Staff recommends denial, Planning Commission recommends approval on all items. These are in Wardwell, Councilwoman Tarkanian, are public hearings which I declare open. So now we will go back to you.
And sorry, Mayor, one more, I'm sorry, one more thing. Is your disclosure on this item going to be the same as the one on the previous items?
Yes.
Okay. So just for the record, the mayor's disclosure is exactly the same.
And so, and also, I would gather councilman Greer's disclosure is the same as well.
Yeah, Mayor, he won't need to repeat that. Once he did it for all the planning items, he's, he's got it, he's clear for those.
Okay.
So everybody's properly disclosed?
Correct.
Okay.
Rick Truesdale, 820 Rancho Lane, Suite 85, Las Vegas, Nevada. I believe staff has some additional comments to make with regard to the, their recommendation, or at least the, the applications in general.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, Peter Loonstein, Deputy Planning Director. The amended request to an office zoning district is in conformance with the study area A1B, the Rancho Charleston land use study and strategic plan. Therefore, staff supports the amended rezoning request and associated variances for lot widths. The proposed parking facility will be held to an additional conditions within Title 19 that restrict hours of operation, hours of lighting. This coupled with the provision of required landscape buffering will mitigate impacts to adjacent residential properties. As such, staff's recommending approval of all applications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this is a public hearing now, if anyone wishes to speak on any of the items 63 through 65. This is your opportunity. Then it will come back to you, and then it'll go to Councilwoman, but she's going to take them one at a time.
And Mayor, if I might just emphasize for those who are here, the residents, that what has happened is the applicant no longer is requesting a change to limited commercial C1. What they're asking for is a change to Office O. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's less intense rather than more intense on the request being made as far as number 62.
Okay. What I'm going to do then, if you have a presentation which might address some of the issues that people will be discussing, why don't you go ahead and do that. I'm sorry to call you up. You may sit back down, and please go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. And congratulations to Councilman Greer. He was quite formidable as a planning commissioner, and he will, I'm sure he will be even more formidable as a city councilman. In fact, in reviewing the Planning Commission meetings, Councilman Greer respected our project, but he had concerns that we were asking for too much in a general plan amendment, and there was some back and forth, and really, some things we had to resolve internally with partners. So we couldn't say yes then, but we were able to get to that point. And so I appreciate his efforts at planning, and think he'll do a good job here. Quite at the beginning, I want to thank Councilman Tarkanian for all her efforts in creating a medical district that Las Vegas so desperately needs. We need a medical district that's state-of-the-art. We need medical services, like on occasions of October 1st, when the medical facilities in that corridor were pushed to their absolute limit. And all of the medical providers we deal with in the medical district, and we've dealt with them for years, are all clamoring for how can they add services, grow, compete with the rest of the valley on the medical basis, which is in addition to the, the most wonderful trauma center in the state of Nevada, and probably the southwest, actually. So for her efforts, I really appreciate everything she's done. And she's worked with us diligently, her and her staff, planning staff. We, we started with a lot of different applications. We're trying to do a lot here along this street. We're excited about what we think we can accomplish, but sometimes when you lay four or five things out, it gets lost in the communication. So I appreciate her instructing us to bring this to a simple form. And, and when we did that, we came back and we were able to say, we can live with a lot of things that got, that were conflicts with one section of the projects or the others. So what is before you is a 308-stall parking lot. It is not a typical lot. It's over landscaped. We've, we've worked with the neighbors and putting additional landscaping on the Shadow Lane side, as well as listening to the neighbors when they said they didn't want access or ingress and egress on Shadow Lane. We deleted that to, to help those traffic issues. On what is a undedicated portion of what Ellis was, we are over landscaping a larger strip right in here, which provides a much greater buffer for the homes just south of it. In addition, we own the house, this is existing R1 right here on the, on this map. We're, we've offered to the neighbors to do some things, which Justin will get into in detail, but it allows, it will allow us to put additional landscaping along that, that common wall with the neighbors, creating a, a real buffer, not just a couple trees and we think we met our obligation. We believe that for the hospitals and the medical providers in the medical district to grow as they need to grow, there, there is no parking in the medical district today. And I know the city has a plan to build a major structure in three-plus years. I'm one of those people that hates to wait for anything. I don't like waiting in lines, anything else. But in trying to help them, some of our medical clients over there be able to move their projects ahead of that three-year period, providing additional parking for patients of the hospital, patients, students at the medical school, people that are going to the medical school clinic, and generally, the people that are parking all over the streets and in secondary locations throughout the medical district, this gives them a, a great opportunity, and also, it's right a delighted crosswalk that exists. So we are, we are meeting all the conditions that staff has recommended. We...
Except for a bus stop.
Except for one correction, which we met with Public Works and we met with RTC, and that was, they indicated they did not want a bus stop moved. They want it where it's existing on, on, on the west side of Westwood. So we're only asking that we'll work with engineering, we'll work with Public Works, but it, it doesn't make sense to have a bus stop in front of your own, your primary ingress and egress off of Charleston. We do have a secondary ingress and egress, which provides for emergency accidents you need to for all the other issues out there. And I guarantee you, we will, this will be landscaped. There will be public landscape features, rock walls, et cetera, like you see in the other frontage entries in the medical district. We want to be a major part. I would love to tell you that today we could build something greater on here, but those are years away. So this is what we're here today, and with the zoning and the master plan that we did is, this is what we're proposing and will build, and we'd love to build it as soon as possible. One thing that... I had our architect just pull an elevation of a, we told the neighbors that we will use low-profile lighting.
I think that's upside down.
There we go.
There you are.
Low-profile lighting, so we don't wash over into the neighborhood. It's, it's a code requirement, but it's, sometimes it's more important to let the neighbors know that that's what you're planning to do for them, so they can hold us to that standard. As you'll see, this light here aren't taller than the trees standing next to them. This is virtually a 18-to-20-foot light pole with lights going directly down. And this is used in, along rural trails, parks in Summerlin, elsewhere. And so that is our commitment, and then Jessica can talk to you further about the rest of the items that, again, all of the items before you, we're in agreement with all of staff's conditions and recommendations, except the bus turnout, which we resolved with RTC and Public Works.
And the only, if I might ask, the only entrance and exit other than access for fire and rescue is directly off of Charleston?
It's off of Charleston, and it's off of Westwood. You see, there's a secondary drive into...
Yes. But was that for emergency or use also by vehicular?
It could be used. It's, so when you look at the people making a left-hand turn at the corner of Charleston and Westwood, the turn lane is already, the turn pocket, the turn lane is already there to turn. People coming from the east, it gives them a, an ingress without making an unsafe U-turn.
And then on the, let's see, the west side of your parking that goes towards Charleston, are those tree buffered on the backside of all those homes on Westwood?
Yes.
Those are all tree buffered, too?
Large trees, landscaping, plus the, the parking islands are, all have trees. They will, it will be a very attractive parking lot for what's there. I know that most of the parking lots throughout the medical district for years have taken every waiver they can get.
Yeah.
And I understand that. It's, but this, we believe, our commitment to working with the neighbors and working with the councilwoman's office and the city is, we, we want to be the good neighbors. It's critical for us that the neighborhood adjacent to us is not impacted negatively by our development, because our success is part of their success.
Now, this specific parking facility is which item on this agenda here?
It's Items...
Sixty-five.
So the, your, the site plan design review is Item 65.
So are we taking these in that order, or are we going to hear them all, or what does our council tell us?
Well, what does council tell us? I was taking them in order.
Yeah, you're, you're going to take them in order, but we need to open it to the public hearing. The public hearing would involve all of the items, but then you'll vote on all of them separately.
All right. So was there anything else in your presentation?
No.
That addresses 62, 63, 64?
Our application, our zoning application complies with the city's facility plan. They have an overlay for Office for that entire side of Charleston, and we comply with that.
Okay. All right. So, but this was an explanation of 65?
Yes.
Okay. So now, public hearing, and then we'll go to planning, or maybe we should do planning first? Any comments?
Madam Mayor, we already did our presentation on, on all applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
And Mayor, if the, if the residents who come up are speaking on any one particular item, they probably need to state that prior to making their comments.
Thank you. Unless you're speaking to all of them, and you are speaking only to one of them, would you specify that, please?
Can I speak to all of them?
After you say who you are.
I'm Tick Sagerblum, and I just want to know where the marijuana money is. That was a joke.
We found some of it. We found some of it, but only a little bit of it. The big money is still in a dark hole.
We're going to get it.
And thank you for being part of that presentation with Councilwoman. You got a lot of good press.
I did. Thank, thank you, Councilman.
Yes, you did. You didn't do so shavily. Okay. So is this in reference to all or specific to all?
This is to all. This is to all.
Okay.
So...
You know, Senator, you had said your name, but you forgot to mention your, Senator Tick Sagerblum, just on...
Senator, I'm here, I live right next to this, so I don't want to complicate the rules. So I'm here as a, as a resident and a property owner. I want to point out a couple of things real quick. First off, your city and you are in the process of creating this new zone right here along Charleston, well, the whole medical district, but it's, it's the new code, whatever it's called. That, that is, that's a process that's just started. But you can see that this whole area along Charleston is being looked at as in total, not just piecemeal. And that's, we've met with you guys already. It's going to take some time. But the reality is, I question why, when this is already being looked at in, in specifically a master plan, they're talking about having the light rail go down here, that we would take two little pieces of property and rezone them and try to build something premium at this point. It just seems kind of crazy to me, if you're in the middle of a rezoning, that you would do this. Secondly, I just point out, they talk about, and I think this is great if they could do it, putting down here, you know, making, closing the street off and doing a turnaround. But that's not part of this proposal. They can't commit to that. I mean, if they came in here, if they, if they did that, and then came back to you and said, okay, now we're going to, to do this project, then that would make sense. But to say to you all, we're going to promise we're going to do this, when it's not part of the application, seems to me you're getting the cart before the horse. Because, now, if you notice, but this, this entrance here is not restricted. This is a full entrance and egress. And what's going to happen, I can guarantee you, is people are going to come down here into the neighborhood, which you can't blame. That's water goes where it goes. But the fat reality is, until they, they block this off, it's just going to encourage people to come in here. So, and the parking lot itself, they talk about the need for the parking lot, but they don't have a contract with the hospital or any of these people to, for these, these parking places. And as you said, the city's going to build a parking garage in a couple of years, so you're actually taking money out of your own pockets to build this thing. And I don't think this is their ultimate goal. And that's... I just want to point out, the reality is, this area right here should be looked at as, as one piece. You can't build anything in here, but if it, these houses are slowly being bought, and they can be bulldozed down, and this will be a great place for a medical building in part of this great medical district. But at this point, to build this parking lot in here for a couple of years just seems crazy, and it is going to impact our neighborhood. So, so for that reason, I, I would ask you to vote against it.
Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hi. My name's Astrea Matlich, and I live at 1626 Birch Street. I believe that the developer has negotiated in good faith, listening to things that the neighbors wanted, like not having the access on Shadow, changing it from C1 to Office. Also, I've been to some of the Form Based Code meetings, and I asked them if their application would be okay under Form Based Code. And they said, yes, the only thing is, is that they would need to have a building. If they did that, then it would pass through Form Based Code. They wouldn't need to have come to the neighborhood. They wouldn't have needed to even eliminate their exit on Shadow. And then as far as having all of the different, you know, houses mowed down for a medical building, those are a lot of different landowners. You know, right now, they're all in different hands. That isn't in the foreseeable future, but right now, we have a dirt lot. And this is something. Is it a placeholder for later? Sure, but it's something. So I'm in favor of their application.
Good afternoon, Claudio Lodo, 1201 Shadow Lane. Good afternoon, Mayor Goodwin, Mayor Protem. I am here today to express my concern. I don't have a state-of-the-art...
Oh, he's got it.
I'll use the old cardboard. I hope you can see it. I'm concerned about the proliferation of parking. I happen to live here on Shadow Lane, this property here, and they are talking about this whole area here, this L, to become a future parking. Now, if we look at that area that the senator just displayed, we are actually very close and immediately across from the medical district. But if we look at our landscape here, you will notice that we have plenty of parking. We have parking here, which is, is a two-story parking, 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 and so on. Parking across the street... Parking across the street. And then if we look at what is going on on the outer front, I hope you can see it, we're also nothing but parking, 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 parking. So I would like to express my concern about the proliferation of parkings, and rather think about intelligent offices, state-of-the-art offices. In regards to the cul-de-sac on Westwood, that is another access to the neighborhood. So if you close that off, the only access into the neighborhood, legal access, would be through Shadow Lane. Now, I live on Shadow Lane, and I have been experiencing the traffic that is going by right now. It's hundreds of cars going through Shadow Lane. So closing that access into the neighborhood to accommodate a parking is a no-no for me. The comment from the applicant, years away, what does that mean for me? Do I have to wait years until I resolve that issue? What does it mean for the value of my property? I would like a community there, not a parking lot. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. Sean McLanahan, 1910 Banny Avenue. I've been working with Mr. Truesdale and Mr. Michaels for about six to eight months on their plans for the property of budding our neighborhood, and they have been nothing but straightforward, upfront, honest, and great to work with. I support their applications. I believe that they will continue to work with the neighborhood on concessions that will make our neighborhood safer, better, nicer. You know, I think all of us living in the Scotch 80s, or anybody that lives in a sort of downtown urban neighborhood, we're going to have to give up some things. Commercial development or things along Charleston is inevitable, and I think it would be very myopic thinking to think that that's not going to happen. So it's very rare that you have developers that don't just say, "This is what I'm doing, deal with it." We have developers here that are willing to work with us and to do things for the neighborhood, so I am completely on board with Rick and Justin in their agenda items sixty-two through sixty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jessica Saylor, 1208 Charmass Lane. I actually believe a lot of what Sean was just saying there. I think that development is inevitable along Charleston. It's Charleston. Of course, there's going to be development. I think that what type of development is what's in question here. So again, this is the map that they had up here before. I agree, and I do not like this big empty lot. So for individual item numbers, I think that having this area, the long narrow section rezoned, is an office, and an actual office building put in that location is a fantastic idea. It would be great to not have it be a big empty lot where there are homeless have created encampments. What I am wholeheartedly against is the demolition and destruction of single-family homes. So one of the things that is sort of overlooked within this proposal is this lot and this plot here, these plots here, and this here. So right now, in order for them to build this, they will have to tear down this home here, which is the old Ellis house, which I have a photo of, which prior to their owning it, it was a really lovely home and was kind of the grand house and the entrance into the neighborhood. Do I turn it this way? That way? There we go. So this is what the home looked like here in April 2009, with big, beautiful trees that are, that are really sort of what the Scotch 80s is about. And here's an idea of what this looks like today. They let the trees die, and the home has fallen into disrepair. It's been vacant for a long time. So now, they're saying that the home is past the point of repair, and they want to tear it down to build the parking lot at this location. I would like to point out that these homes, this location is across from these two houses. So you can get an idea of what the neighborhood looks like, right? Because it's one thing to look at it on an overhead map, it's one thing to look at a picture, right, and kind of get an idea. So this is Claudio's home here, which is a beautiful estate, and this is the home that would be directly abutting the proposed parking lot. So really beautiful and lovely houses. Then we have, this is the street where they're proposing the wall. So this is the west side of the street, the east side of the street. If you're here, you're looking down towards UMC. This is Neil's home, so they would, they're proposing to put the wall there, you know, to block traffic coming into the neighborhood. So again, a really lovely residential street. And then these are the homes that would be torn down on that street. So here, we have the home that they own, which is 1145 Westwood Drive, which is ostensibly a very cute house, and it's a good home, a fixed-up that nurses or doctors, or maybe not doctors, but that nurses or medical students can live in. This is the wrong house. There's a home that's adjacent to it that is also there, 1139 Westwood, that would be demolished. Then we have 1109 Westwood down here. This is the home that they're wanting to put the driveway through. So you can see that with the nice big trees. And then this is the home that's directly on the corner, which is, I believe, zoned C1, which is nice to actually have there as an office building going into a residential neighborhood. So again, I just want you to kind of get an idea of what it is and what these properties look like. I am fully, wholeheartedly against any sort of destruction of single-family homes for the economic benefit of one individual, but I do want to just make it pointy clear, I do believe that having this zoned is an office, and putting an office building in here will be beneficial to the neighborhood, but I do not want to see the destruction of these homes on the side and a parking lot put in. I do not want a parking lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Doug Leydlaw. I live at 1540 Pine Street, and I'm very supportive of the applicant's plan. I see this as a very good partnership, very effective working relationship between a developer and a neighborhood. As someone whose livelihood depends on the realization of medical districts all across the country, we have to recognize that these sorts of efforts don't benefit single individuals. They benefit our community. Each one of us will benefit from the development of this medical district. This may be a small piece of it, but it's important to keep moving towards the goal. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close publica- Yes, sir. Come on up, please. State your name for the record.
Scott Carlson, 1700 Banny Avenue, Las Vegas. I'm here because I think the developers have shown a good-faith effort to work with the neighborhood and have negotiated in good faith, and accordingly, I've signed a petition among several others in support of what their efforts are. However, at the same time, I want to, I want to thank, under the leadership of the mayor and the mayor pro tem, you guys have done a very good job of soliciting neighborhood input on these matters, and I am very grateful for that, and that's why I'm getting to speak now. So thank you for that, number one. But number two, the other comment I want to make is, I think there's a handful of people that sometimes think that the property rights that are nerved to their property give them more control and regulation over the property of others. And I think that it's great that you ask for our input, but at the end of the day, it's left to the expertise of the planning department and the city council and the applicant to work these things out. So I think, I welcome that you give us that input, but I appreciate your work in doing the right thing for our neighborhood. But again, as I said, I signed a petition in support. I think these developers are willing to work with us, and I support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is it very brief, because you already had a shot?
The Scotch 80 resident, Tammy Ancoman, 1113 Payer. The Scotch 80 residents that are not for that parking area that were in discussion, they want to know what it is that they're negotiating, because they're not aware, they're not aware of any negotiations with the residents of the Scotch 80s. That was-
A question?
Yeah.
I think that, you know, I'm not sure that's before us today at all to consider. And so, if there's no one else, I'm going to turn this over to councilwoman, and anything else you wanted to add before I do that?
Yes, ma'am. Just one thing as it relates to the homes that it was referenced we would be tearing down. There is one home on Westwood. It is the second one in that would have to be torn down, because obviously, you're building a drive aisle, so that home would go down. This home here, we bought, when we bought the property, it was from a lender, so we already received a property that was in very tough shape, to say the least. To say that we've been dealing with squatters and people stealing electricity and everything else that comes along with that is a bit of an understatement. So just to clarify, those would be the two homes that would be demolished. The reference of this property, while, yes, we do own it, it is not a part of this application.
And if, I'd like to ask, there's an X on the home to the south of the west entry. What's that X mean?
Not a part. It was just to clarify. So when we were speaking with someone, they had said, "Well, don't you, you own this, 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 and this." And we said, "No, it stops right here." That's why we put the X. It's the two parcels on the corner that are part of the application, the former trailer park and the home, or the property, the one-acre property that fronts from Shadow that ties into the former trailer park along Ellis.
And to be obnoxious question to you, because I had heard the entry was off of Charleston, was there a traffic study? If you own the two corner buildings, and on the west side of Westwood, what are those two buildings? Are those homes? Yeah, those two. Are those homes?
No, that's part of the item that we abated for Tingey Law Firm. That's parking lot.
Okay. So the amount of extra traffic that might be coming in, are you encouraging traffic from the north, or you don't care which?
We're encouraging all traffic to come from Charleston. However, for safety reasons, we were advised by the traffic consultant to make sure that we have a drive on Westwood. One, because it would be unsafe in morning traffic to make the U-turn at Charleston and Westwood, to come back in and turn right. Two, if there is an accident on Charleston, you still need to be able to get ingress and egress from the property, hence the second drive. And originally- I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, it's just, I mean, knowing how if there's an arm or a keypad or anything, your north exit is just open. You come in, you go out, there's room for two cars, one going each way.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just thinking of the traffic, the congestion, which is already bad because of the bus stop, which of course, you know about, when you're trying to get home, which means for those of us in the Scotch 80 area, we either come down Westwood or go to Shadow. So-
So one of the concerns of the neighborhood, because our original plan for this property had ingress and egress on Shadow, and they said it adversely affected them, right, with access to the neighborhood.
That which is nice.
And speaking with the city, they said there's roughly 80-car trips per day on Westwood. And so what we did is, when we looked at it, we said, "Okay, we can shift our focus and do the secondary entrance and exit off of Westwood as close as humanly possible to Charleston, without making it dangerous, you know, where people have to take a quick right and left, right? We can't make the drive aisle on the hard corner, which that building stays."
All right, and talk a little bit about the north entry. There's no arm, no keypad. People just come in and can go out, and you handle one car coming in at a time, or with the two? I mean, what, how wide is that?
It's your standard drive aisle, which you see there. We will run the parking spaces. If at some point in the future it turned into there would be an arm, then obviously, that arm would be far set back into the drive to make sure there's an appropriate queuing area. We're not going to have an arm that's immediately at the sidewalk, because that's far too dangerous, and nor would Public Works or the Building Department ever approve that. So if we were going to do restricted access, that access point would be set back, and we would be reducing the number of parking spaces on the project.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? I see somebody that I recognize.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Todd Byss, 700 South Fourth Street, Las Vegas. I'm one of the legal counsel for the applicant. I just wanted to make just one brief point, because this is something that has concerned me a little bit of, in my review of the applicant and some of the bases for the opposition of it, and Senator Sager Bloom kind of highlighted it, and that is, the fact that this might compete with a government parking lot that may or may not ever come into fruition in future years, isn't, and it can't be a basis for denying a property or the use of their property, as something is allowed under the code. And I mean, I know all of you know that, so I just wanted to make it clear on the record that, while I understand Mr. Senator Sager Bloom's observations, city can't say, "Well, you know what, we want to compete in the parking space, so therefore, we won't approve yours." And that's all that we're asking, is this applicant should be, this applicant and their land use proposal, provided that they comply with the code, should be treated in the ordinary course.
Okay, thank you.
I think, thank the council for its time.
Any other comments? I do want to ask council a question, and maybe it's planning. If in fact, a year out, three years out, there is a wish to change the use of the parking to something else, they would still have to come back here, correct?
That is correct, Madam Mayor. They would have to file another land use application for new entitlement.
And for anything other than what's on these four items? You would have to keep coming back here.
So if, as Senator Sager Bloom referenced, an office building, or as Ms. Saylor referenced, an office building, something along those lines, we will be back before you with that plan, working with the neighbors.
And going through the process.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else you wanted to ask, and then I'm going to, anybody, questions, comments, anything? Either way, they're still here, so I guess not. Anything else you want to add?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I've closed public comment. Anything more from planning? No. Yours.
I would like planning to read what is currently before us on sixty-two, just so we have a clarity that it isn't what's there now. Would you do that, please?
Sure. Mayor Potem, so the original request was to go from R4, R1, and R3 to C1. That request was amended. The current request before you is to go from R4 High-Density Residential, R1 Single-Family Residential, and RE Residence Estate to O Office.
Just wanted to clarify that. I think that you're moving to a less intense zoning there, and I think office, as both sides of this issue have mentioned, seems appropriate, so I move for approval on item number sixty-two.
Okay, there's a motion to approve on agenda item sixty-two. All in favor, I mean, please vote, yea or nay, whatever, your choice, and please post. That was great. Motion carries. Agenda item sixty-three.
And could I ask planning?
Could planning, again, read it the way it is today, not the way it's written?
Mayor Potem, actually, the request stays the same, because the lot dimensions are not changing. It is still applicable to the related rezoning application.
So no changes here, even though you feel you should have 100 feet, but we don't have 100 feet on those lots, but planning feels that's okay?
That is correct, because it's almost a catch-22 in able to conform with the-
Can you speak a little closer to your mic?
Sorry. So to be able to rezon the applications, rezon the properties, the underlying general plan is for the office designation. The lots are substandard, and it's almost a catch-22 that they would need the approval of the variances to be able to rezon the properties to be in conformance with the general plan.
But right now, that fits in with what's requested, so I move to approve item number sixty-three.
Okay, there's a motion to approve agenda item sixty-three. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Agenda item sixty-four.
And again, if I would ask planning to read it as it is today?
Sure, Mayor Potem. So once again, the variance is needed- So once again, the variance is needed for the rezoning of the property because the minimum lot size requirements cannot be met. However, the general plan designation would be in conformance with the requested rezoning request.
So I might say, for those who are residents here, basically this just matches the previous item that we approved. And this is because there's nothing we can do about the older lots that were more narrow. So on item number 64, I move for approval.
Okay, there's a motion to approve item number 64. Please vote, please post. Motion carries. And on agenda, item 65, please, councilwoman.
Item number 65, would you just give the information as it exists today? And I'm doing this because we've had so many changes. And I mean, I got a change just today, I think, an hour into our early morning session. And so because of all these changes, I want us all to be sure.
Sure, Mayor Potem. So the as-written request is the same. So it is the site development and plan review for a proposed parking lot on the 3.27 acres of the southeast corner of Charleston and Westwood Drive.
Now, on this item, I have some different feelings. I do not think it's appropriate to intrude as far as this would into the residential area. It wasn't that long ago that we took a very thorough survey of that whole area about putting a parking lot there when UMC came to us. I do not feel that it matches the residential that we have there. By intruding as far as it does into the residential, it causes a problem there and it will cause traffic, I believe, through that secondary way out to Westwood. So I cannot move for this, and I will tell you something else. I think that our garage will probably be built in two years because just, I know the people that work here in the city, I could be wrong. I won't be here, but I think that it will be done in two years, the garage in the medical district. In the meantime, can you imagine parking in that parking lot and crossing Charleston? Well, we can say there's a light nearby and you can go to the light. Unfortunately, we've seen through the depths in our city that people don't go to the crosswalk or they don't go to the light. I would say that if you had parking there, the only safe way to do it would be if you had a bridge that went across and over Charleston. If you paid me $100 for every time I crossed Charleston, I wouldn't take 10 cents because it's really, really a dangerous place to make a crossing. We have no assurance if eventually we might have the cul-de-sac there. We have no assurance as to, well, in fact, I think Mr., that Rick had said earlier that it would only be two or three years, it would be a parking lot, and then it would be something else that would be looked into because the other parking lot would probably be done. As I said, we took a very, very thorough survey of residents, and the residents who have come to me in all of this have said they don't want, you know, when you, when you open your car now, you beep it. And they don't want to hear the beeping, they said, when people from the hospital area who have different shifts, different times, late at night and everything. And so mainly because I feel it's not conducive to the type of district it is now. I feel the parking intrudes too far into the residential area. I feel that there will be too much traffic coming out that secondary entrance. And let's face it, would you rather go out Charleston or would you rather go out that side one and then get to Charleston? Anybody who lives in that area knows that you'd rather do the latter. So in this number 65, I move for denial of this, and I think it's very important to know that this parking right now is not that much of an urgency with what's being done at Valley, looking at their, Valley Hospital, looking at their parking and what we're doing with our garage. So I move for denial.
Mayor, before you make the vote...
Do you want me to say something else?
Yeah, just want you to indicate, I know that Mr. Byss indicated that somehow that you weren't taking into consideration this new proposed parking lot in three years. Just to put on the record that you don't, that you're not denying this based upon any kind of competition with some other former garage.
Oh, my gosh. You have never heard me mention anything about money coming from that parking lot. I'm not interested in that. I don't even know if they're going to charge money for it. I have no idea what they're going to do. It will be between the medical school and between the UNLV and the city with the determin. So I can tell you very, very deeply and honestly, the money thing never has entered my mind. The first time I really heard it was today when it was mentioned. So that is my motion, and I'm doing this after having much thorough discussion with people who live in the area, having small group meetings, trying to do the very best we could. Remember, we sometimes forget, okay, let's close off, let's close off Westwood. And that might be nice for some people on Westwood, it might not be so nice for somebody else. It's like a domino effect that we have, and that isn't, that isn't really important in this motion. The important thing is it intrudes too far into the residential area. I do not feel that it's appropriate for this area. I move for denial.
Okay, and if it's all right, comments I think might be appropriate, and I'm going to make them because I live in there.
Sure.
And I really am grateful for the buffering, the landscape buffering, and I'm looking at this entirely as a resident at this point, that it's being buffered off of Shadow. Because the greatest concern for all of us who live in the neighborhood is the access, ingress, egress, the things we've been battling with years as Oakley was closed off to the neighborhood, then of course now, and we had the fire station closed off that access as well. I think what you've got planned and knowing that we're going into form-based code development and consideration and listening to the senator talk about everything that's going to be coming, I know that obviously you and the entire company is looking to see how it can participate in the medical district development. So I really believe that as a stopgap of something, what you have done, my only concern is going forward, looking at the traffic coming in Westwood and out Westwood, that entrance. But if in fact, I know because of the reputation of the ownerships of the companies that you don't want anybody to have an accident because you've got, you know, backup of traffic. So assuming that, I do think as an interim piece for parking there and that you've got it so well buffered, I am going to vote to approve it because I do believe it is two things. I think it's a temporary gap there, it is going to change, and the whole neighborhood. And as we watch what's happening around the medical district, I know in the different houses that are for sale, noticed even on Mr. Potter's law office, that's on, for sale there on Shadow Lane at Ellis. So we know the neighborhood's changing, but those of us who live there and have lived there 40 years plus want to preserve it, and I know you're sensitive to it. So the fact you've buffered so well with landscaping, I'm comfortable. I know that that piece is very difficult to use, and I would imagine in the future you will incorporate it into something else, but I feel very comfortable that at that time, the city council will take it under wise consideration, what you're doing.
And mayor, if you're, if the concern is with traffic coming down Westwood, we can certainly make this exit right here, a right-hand out only, right? So then people will not be able to make a left and come towards Scotch ADs, right? That is a concern. We are more than happy to make this exit drive. We'll make it a condition of the approval where the right, you only have a right-hand out onto Westwood. So that way...
That would be wonderful.
Well, mayor, can I just say something, please? Because I know these areas so well. Look down at Campbell. Look where the guy that called at this office was. And what happened? He said, "In order to keep it away from the cars going down Campbell and causing additional problems, we were going to put these ballast up, and that was going to keep the traffic." Well, you know what? It doesn't stop it. There's no way to stop it unless you put a wall that they would have to drive through, and you don't want to do that. So it doesn't stop that traffic. We have had that experience at Campbell and Charleston, and it doesn't stop it because people don't care. They go right through those ballast. You can see their tire marks on it. And I think we're forgetting some other people who live here. Where's the gentleman who spoke about his, he lived here 40 years and he had, has he left? He had the, he said it was a rickety exhibit, remember? He dropped it in fact. Oh, there he is. Sorry about that. You know, what about him? What about him and the traffic that's going to come out of that area?
No, no, he's at the corner of Ellis and Shadow.
His input was no traffic on Shadow.
And you closed it all.
That was one of his, he has many different points.
Oh, well, then, I have the wrong person then, sorry. I cannot see that far back there anyway. But I do know that there was someone who lived near there that at one time did complain about the traffic that would go by them. I can only tell you, I do my very best to represent the residents.
You do a great job.
And I, and because I represented the residents, that's what I said when I got elected. I was always going to maintain as much as I could to protect them. I do not think if we've approved this, we're protecting the residents. Why do we need a parking lot for two or three years? We have enough parking. That was shown by some diagram today. We have enough parking there. But anyway, let me just go with the motion. Whichever way it goes, we'll all walk out of here alive, and that's good.
Thank you. No, you do. You represent your neighbors, everybody in Ward won so fabulously and always passionately for them. I know this is the devil in me that's asking this.
It is.
Because I've done it.
It is.
At some point, if in fact, that became a real issue and we found that the traffic coming down Westwood in and out, and you said that you could consider having it just out.
I'll make that a condition today, ma'am.
No, 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 you haven't heard what I was going to suggest.
Oh, okay, sorry.
The teeth, that if they come in the wrong way, it flattens their tires.
No, you couldn't slice the...
Now, I'm looking at Mr. Truesdale. He knows that from years ago that we did it and trained people. This is not an entrance, this is an exit.
As much as we love to think everybody has their best intention, we know sometimes people go the wrong way or whatever, we would be willing, if it becomes an issue, to install the reverse grates.
Ooh. Okay, let me hear from everybody else. Thank you. Councilman Anthony.
First of all, I didn't, it sounds like a good idea. I didn't understand how, where would you put those? These, I know the mayor's talking about, where would you put them?
The reverse grates?
Yeah. In order to accomplish what?
To prevent people from going in the wrong direction on the property.
Or coming out.
They only can come out from the parking lot there. They can't come in, which stops traffic going into Westwood on a right turn to cause more traffic problems on Charleston. There can only be an exit. But I don't know if fire, if you're assuming fire's going to come in and out there.
Let me, just from a legal perspective, what would be the triggering event that would cause them or you to require that reverse grading to be installed? What would be the triggering event that would happen? Would there be, you know, an accident? Would there be a number of cars coming down there? Would there be 100 cars coming down their direction? What would be the triggering mechanism to require that reverse grate?
Only, I mean, as I said, I was being the devil here, and I wasn't demanding anything. I was just trying to look, living in the neighborhood and going home consistently down Westwood. With that, an entrance or an exit, I could see traffic backing up, and then you do have the bus turnout, so people are already having to wait, come around behind the bus. So your accidents really become, until people are trained, that you can only come out of the parking lot there. But I could see that fire and rescue might have to use that, and therefore you couldn't do that.
And the bus stop will be located further west at the Tingey Law Firm building. That is something that we worked with RTC because they need enough distance to be able to get to the left-hand lane to make the left onto Shadow. So the requirement of us having a bus turnout here, a compromise was made is that they'll have an easement and can set it back about, I'll call it 75 yards west of the site, which is better for RTC.
And Madam Mayor, I would like to say that if we're saying RTC said that, I'd like to have a written agreement that RTC said this. Because in the past, you guys have said some things and they didn't turn out to be true.
I can forward you the email.
And that's all, I want to have facts. I mean, that's what you, you have to go on, are facts.
And I believe Lucian...
And we've promised a lot of different things, and we've changed things a lot, and I appreciate the fact of the changes that you're making. But I just want to find the true facts because when I talk to RTC, it's sometimes hard to get that done. But that's all right.
Okay, Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, mayor. There's, there's good comments on both sides. I'm kind of going back and forth on this, but I guess what it comes down to is the two issues that have come up are the traffic on, I'm sorry, what's that, what's that road again, on the west?
Westwood.
Westwood. Traffic on Westwood and the appropriate uses of a parking lot. So, so it's already been zoned for office, a parking lot is allowed. So as of today, it either becomes a parking lot and it's put into use and people can use it, and you can make money off of it, which is great. That's the way it's supposed to be. Or it sits there as an empty lot for who knows how long. So I would just assume it get put into use. And the second thing is if people are driving out of the parking lot onto Westwood, I don't know why they would go into the residential area and try to navigate through there, trying to get out of there. That would be, to me, if I'm doing that, that would be kind of silly. I don't, I wouldn't know where to go. I wouldn't know how to get out of there. I'm just going to make a right turn onto Charleston and get onto Charleston and get the heck out of there. So I can't imagine any vehicle traffic going back there. I guess the only question is if there does become a major traffic issue, and I would have to ask our staff, is, is there some kind of administrative review we could do, you know, a year from now when somebody comes and says, "Hey, there's 100 cars that are driving through our neighborhood and it's causing a problem. There's been six accidents," or can we bring that back for a review? Is that possible?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, the council has the discretion to place a required review for any future date and for whichever particular reason they want to review it in the future. So yes, you can have a required review to review traffic accounts or any calls for service or whatever it may be that you want to review.
So would that be part of the motion today, or can we just bring that back anytime?
That would be a condition of approval that you would have to add. You differentiate if you wanted to come back to council, planning commission, or to be administrative, and if there was an issue and it failed the administrative, obviously it would come to council after that.
Okay, well, I'm going to, I'm going to support the parking lot, so I think that administrative view would be important, but I'm not the one making the motion.
Okay, so if there are no other comments, anybody else? Yes, councilman?
Mayor, just a question. Between, along Westwood, between the homes on west of the long part of the L of the parking lot, is there a wall between the backyards of those homes and the...
Here, yes.
Yes. Further question, on the east side of the long part of the L, are people going to be able to walk from the parking lot into those retail areas or is it going to...
No, it's currently, this is all walled off.
It's a wall.
Correct.
And then the, I thought the Mayor Potem brought up a valid point, if it is intended to be a parking lot for medical district across the street, crossing the street will be important, how we manage that. And are there any plans for a crosswalk if that goes in?
There's an existing crosswalk that's lighted just west of Westwood.
With a light, with a traffic light.
There's a traffic light.
Well, so it's not a full conventional traffic light.
Oh, push the button.
You push the button, it turns red, then you can cross.
Thank you. So the question as Councilman Anthony was sharing was, is it, is it an open lot or should we use it for some form of making money that's low intensity and it's not putting a large wall in people's backyards there? It seems to be an appropriate use of the property. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion. Oh, councilman.
Thank you, just real quick. I just want to say that when this was right in front of planning commission, I know that the neighbors had some consternation on, obviously on both sides, for and against. And then I'm happy to see that it came back at the office. I think that's more appropriate than the C1. Not to say that you can't get there because it is Charleston, and by the time that you really figure out what you want to do with that area, then I think you can, you can, you know, go to the C1. You know, this has changed a little bit. There was, I know, talk about exiting out on Shadow, and I know that there was going to be some, like a, like a guard rail or something where you couldn't go all the way through Westwood, but I like the idea of having the tracks down. And, you know, it's probably not the perfect situation right now with this parking lot, but I think it is appropriate for now, and I'll be supporting it.
Okay, so there's a motion. Please vote and please post. Okay, so, um, there's a motion, please vote and please post.
I would say, Mayor, that this motion might end up with people over, with profits over people.
Okay.
And I was right.
Thank you, and I, I do truly...
No, no, we have to make, there has to be, that motion failed.
Yeah, there's a adjustment, I forgot, there was a motion for denial.
We have to make another motion, which I don't make.
You're correct, that's correct. Someone, someone who voted as a no needs to make a...
I need to change it.
What?
Well, it's, I voted for motion to deny, I wanted to vote motion to approve.
No, he wants to change. His green should be a circle with a red. He has the wrong recording. So if you will, correct? You voted, push, oh, she can't...
Well, it has to, has to come back up, the clerk has to come back up.
Put it back up so he can re-record his vote. All right. Senator, what do we need?
Alternative motion, Mayor, since that motion failed.
Correct. We can do a second motion, an alternative motion, but we can't necessarily bring back the old motion to correct Councilman Greer's vote.
Right, but, but since Councilman Greer indicated on the record orally that he made a mistake on the voting, the clerk can make that change into the record and then we'll just need an alternate vote from someone else.
Because it's his very first vote as a record.
Well, you give, well, you can rescind the previous item and then you can re-vote.
All right, I want to vote to rescind the previous item. I want him unscathed going forward. Okay, do we have to vote to rescind? We do have to vote to rescind?
Vote to rescind and then you'll do another motion.
Please, I'm voting, move to rescind the vote.
You're voting to rescind?
Bring him back so he can vote his, what he wants in his conscience.
Okay, don't forget people...
You're being so nice, he owes you.
You guys didn't give me a re-vote on that.
I, I'm not being nice at all. I'm not being nice at all. I, I'm telling you, I believe in my heart, I believe in my heart.
I know, you wouldn't move otherwise. You're doing what you believe and that's what you're supposed to do.
I believe that you should always, always put people over profits, okay? And I'm supposed to vote yes?
I'm voting to rescind, all right. Now, Councilwoman has made a motion to deny on Agenda Item 65. So that is, after you erase this thing that's on my screen.
And a yes vote is for the denial.
Okay. No, 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 we, we have Councilwoman's vote to deny, yes.
Correct.
A yes vote means...
Is for the denial.
Deny.
For denial of what? Bringing it back.
No, 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 no. We're, we're now the process where we're now voting on the original motion. The original motion was for denial. A yes by you means that you agree with the denial.
Right.
So no means that you don't agree with the denial.
Okay. So now we vote again. I just want to make sure you had a clean record of planning. I want you to have a clean record here.
Okay.
Okay, now you vote, you're denying, so you vote, yay, you're denying.
So now I'm voting to deny.
Yes, a, a yes vote is for the denial.
You go, yes.
In the denial of...
This is your original motion.
I listened to you, you just told me you were the devil today.
Okay, now post. Okay, now we need a motion to approve.
We need a motion alternative to approve.
With the condition, why don't you restate it and do that, please, since you made your motion.
Okay, I, I will make a motion to approve, um, the site development plan, but, uh, I, since I'm making a motion, I want to put a condition in there about the Councilwoman's, um, concern about traffic, so why don't you help me with that?
All right, I'll take a stab at it. The, the first thing I must ask for clarification, do you want it to be an administrative review at first and if it passes that, then it's fine? If, if it fails it, it will be brought to council?
I want you guys to look at it and if it's not a problem, then we don't hear about it. If it does look like it's an issue that we need to know about, then you're going to bring it to us.
Before, before he reads it, are you talking about the reverse grate that Mr. Truesdale indicated or you're just saying that...
Just, I, I, just the, the whole traffic situation around that piece of property. If, if you guys look at it a year from now, it's not a problem, everything's flowing smoothly, I'm sure you can figure that out and if that's the case, yes. If it is a problem that needs to be brought to our attention so we can do something, then you're going to do that.
Okay. So with that, with that direction, um, I would suggest a condition that reads as follows, "An administrative required review shall be conducted one year from the date of approval to assess the traffic concerns related to traffic being introduced to Westwood Drive."
Great.
To which you agree, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, there's a new motion. All in favor, please, oh, well, vote whatever you want to vote, but please vote.
At least it's the better of two.
And please post. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your help and...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, for all the hours you spent working with us on this project. We, we've gotten to know each other very well, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 66 through 69. 66, ZON 72157, our request for rezoning from U undeveloped, I, um, SC Service Commercial, general plan designation to C1 Limited Commercial. 67, VAR 7215, I request for variance to allow five-foot rear yard setback, backward, twenty feet's required. 68, SUP 72159, our request for a special use permit for a proposed thirty-two-hundred-square-foot beer wine cooler, off-sale, establishment use, southwest corner, Peak Drive, Rainbow Boulevard. Number 69, SDR 72160, request for a site development plan review for a proposed thirty-two-hundred-square-foot general retail use convenience store with fuel pumps and a thirty-eight-hundred-square-foot general retail building with waivers to allow a six-foot wide landscape buffer along the south property line, a five-foot landscape buffer along the west property line, where eight feet's required and to allow a ten-foot wide landscape buffer along a portion of the north property line where fifteen feet's required. The applicant is Hamika Family and the owner is the Moyer Trust on .97 acres, southwest corner, Peak Drive, Rainbow Boulevard, U undeveloped, Zone SC Service Commercial. General plan designation proposed C1 Limited Commercial. Staff and Planning Commission recommend approval of Item 66. Staff recommends denial and Planning Commission recommend approval on Items 67 through 69. These are in Ward 5 with Councilman Greer and public hearings which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Good afternoon, Laura Drea, 520 South 4th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. Our site is at Rainbow and the segment of Peak that terminates at I-95. This, this land here is owned by the water district, so there's no throughput, not a lot of traffic on Peak Road. This matter comes with anonymous PC approval, but even so, we've improved the site since then by eliminating a landscape waiver and adding as many interior trees as we could fit, thereby coming closer into compliance with code. We're short only three, three trees on the interior. The recommendation for denial is based on, um, the setback waiver of the building along the western property line. It's, um, setback five feet where twenty feet are required. It's a front-loading building with no rear lighting and it's a hundred and sixty-four feet from the nearest home. These two nearest buildings or structures are just enclosed garages on the multifamily site. Uh, the two buildings provide a barrier to air and light and noise and they function better to eliminate fueling activity than trees could, hence that we asked for that landscape waiver to put a building in there. We've balanced all the parking. Uh, we comply with all the parameters of the use permit and ask Councilman Greer for his support a second time on this.
Okay, we're going to have a public hearing, but I'd like to ask you, where are the gas pumps on this piece of property?
This represents the fueling canopy in the center. The building buffers from the nearby multifamily. And then we meet landscape code on the south, which again, there's not too many homes actually adjacent to the property line on the south.
So an entrance, exit, one is Peak and one is Rainbow, right?
Yes.
And what's the corner building on the northeast there?
This is the, um, companion convenience store and paying station, as most fueling stations have.
Okay. Oh, and then additionally, the other convenience stores, you have two sort of like.
Right, we have a conve, proposed convenience store here and this is just a retail building, not leased yet.
And what's planned for that?
We don't know.
Could be another convenience store or something, or a restaurant?
Typical C1 uses, anything allowed in C1, we're...
Okay.
Considering.
Mr. Summerfield, before we, you don't look like Mr. Summerfield, Mr. Lowenstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The proposed rezoning of the property to limited commercial zoning district conforms to the underlying Service Commercial general plan designation and staff does support that, that request. However, as evidenced by the variance and waiver request, the proposed site is overdeveloped with a reduced rear yard setback, reduced landscape buffers and landscape materials that would shield the adjacent neighbors from air and sound in light of a commercial site. Therefore, staff recommends denial, denial of the remaining requests. Thank you.
Thank you very much. These are public hearing items. Anybody wishing to be heard on these items, please come forward. I'll close public hearing and any comments from council?
Madam Mayor, I just don't understand exactly where, could you put your diagram up again? Where is the back of it? Where is the five feet going where we should have thirty feet or twenty-eight?
There's five feet here on the west property line from this building where there should be twenty feet.
And where are the nearest residences?
The nearest residence would be this building here.
Uh-huh.
It's a hundred and sixty-four feet away from our proposed building.
I got you, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, we will turn this over to Councilman Greer.
Thank you, um, uh, Mayor. You know, um, I didn't have a problem with this prior to looking at it. I think, uh, with the location being on Rainbow makes it a, um, you know, viable commercial entity in, in thoroughfare and so, um, I'll be supporting it.
Okay, so let's take them one at a time. Agenda Item 66.
Thank you, Mayor. Agenda Item 66, ZON 72157, I move for approval.
Okay, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 66, please vote, please post.
Mayor, before, I just had a question for planning.
Is that all right, Councilman Greer?
Yes.
Do we have a question? Yes, please.
Peter, you mentioned something about overdeveloped, did I hear that right? Could you, if I got that right, could you clarify what you meant by that?
That's correct, through you, Madam Mayor. So typically, if not meeting the setback requirements meets, meaning that they're putting larger structures onto the site or, or putting too much on the site, intensifying it beyond what the buildable envelope would have been, uh, and therefore that is why I stated that it was overdeveloped.
Thank you.
Okay, so Agenda Item now, um, sixty-six is fine, we did vote and we did post, no, Councilmen, we're waiting, there we go. Okay, the motion carries. Agenda Item 67, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. VAR 72158, I also move for approval.
There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 67, please vote and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 68, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, SUP 72159, I also move for approval.
There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 68, please vote and please post. That motion carries.
And finally, Agenda, Agenda Item 69, SDR 72160, I also move for approval.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve the final Agenda Item number 69, please vote and please post. And that motion carries. And for Agenda Items 70 through 75, they're abayed to the 16th of May?
Yeah.
Okay, so we move to Agenda Item 76. MOD 72282, public hearing, applicant Providence Master Homeowners Association owner, Cliff's Edge LLC at Al for possible action on a request for a major modification of the Cliff's Edge master plan, development plan, excuse me, and design guidelines to amend patio cover setbacks in the residential small lot attached medium-low and low-density residential special, special land use designations. This is in Ward 6 with Councilwoman Fury. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval and this is public hearing which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present? Come on forward, please, and if you would, state your name.
Good afternoon, Daniel Baker, 8960 West Post Road.
Thank you, is there anything you wish to add here?
Uh, we're just seeking to amend the developer guidelines to match our own design guidelines.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lowenstein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The applicant is proposing to modify the Cliff's Edge, now known as Providence Design Guidelines, to allow a five-foot rear yard setback for patio covers where the current guidelines require the ten feet. Uh, staff recommends approval as this modification will bring the requirements in line with is required for sing, similar residential zoning districts in the rest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard on this item? I'll close public hearing and we'll turn this over to Councilwoman Fury.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion to approve Item MOD 72282.
There's a motion then to approve Agenda Item 76, please vote and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 77, VAR 72476, public hearing, applicant owner, Minion 770 LLC for possible action or request for variance to allow a zero-foot rear and side yard setback where five feet's required for an existing patio cover on .3, 13 acres, 2728 Lake Crest Drive, RPD 5, residential plan development, five units per acre. This is in Ward 4 with Councilman Anthony. Planning Commission, um, recommends denial, staff recommends approval. Boy, that's unusual. Public hearing is open and is the applicant or representative present? Interesting. Mr. Lowenstein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The applicant is requesting a zero-foot rear and side yard setback for a patio cover that was constructed without permit. Subject lot is adjacent to a body of water in the Desert Shores subdivision and the adjacent property is developed with a stairway down to the lake shore along the side property line in question. Uh, staff also received a letter from the Desert Shores Community Association and recommended approval of the request. Thank you.
Weird. That's weird. Okay, public hearing on this item, this is Agenda Item 77. I'll close public hearing and then I'm going to turn this over to Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I know there's been some, uh, some sidebar conversations and a little consternation because nothing is ever, um, controversial in Ward 4. But we did, we did, I did receive a letter, I think all of you received a letter from the, uh, owner of the, um, of the property talking about this particular patio cover. So let me just kind of walk through and put on the record why I'm going to make my particular motion. So, uh, this particular patio cover, it's my understanding was built, um, about a year ago. It's a, they already have a covered patio in the backyard, but they built this extension out and, uh, they're asking for variance for a zero setback. So it's a permanent structure, um, it has electrical, um, they are, like I said, they already have patio cover. They, uh, they did not talk to the Desert Shores Association, anything of this nature according to their CCNRs and it's in the documents when they purchased the home, they need to go to the association to get approval from the architecture committee as well as the entire board in order to build a structure like this. Once they found out that it had already been built, they told them to, uh, present the plans to both those bodies. They presented it to the Desert Shores Architecture Committee, uh, they denied it, went to the full board, uh, and the, uh, full board denied it based on their, uh, CCNRs. Once that happened, code enforcement was notified and apparently the, um, the covered patio was built, um, by their son who is not a, from, from what I understand, is not a licensed contractor. They did not receive any building permits, they don't have any electrical permits, so there's electrical inside this thing that has never been, uh, never been inspected, so we don't know what kind of structure it is. Uh, they, once they decided it was denied... they decided it was denied by the Desert Shores, they decided to appeal it to the city council. They're basically asking for a variance, but they want us to approve the structure as it is. According to the notification in that particular area, there were twenty people opposed to it, two supported. The adjacent neighbors are definitely in opposition because it's right up against their particular property line. And so it's not supposed to be there. So they really need to take it down, and if they want to put something like this up in the first place, they need to go through the proper channels, including Desert Shores. Really, Desert Shores does a great job handling these type of structures in this particular community, but since it's before this particular council, I'm going to make a motion to deny the variance. They're going to need to take the structure down, and apparently I have to give them some time to do this. I have no idea. I was going to ask them how much time they needed. I mean, I'm just going to shoot off the top of my head. I'll give them sixty days to take this thing down. That should be plenty of time. So my motion is to deny the variance, to have them take this down in sixty days. Code enforcement needs to go out there and check to make sure that it is down, and if it isn't, then they're going to have to go through their enforcement process and work with them to get the structure down. So that's my motion, Madam Mayor.
And with that, might Councilman Coffin make a comment?
Sure.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. I will support the motion. Yesterday or the day before, I received a letter, three-page, single-spaced letter from the applicants who indicated they might not be able to be here because of a medical emergency for one of them, one of the couple. They had to be in California for a doctor appointment. And I think it was a good letter. It was passionate. But then, all of a sudden, I think around the third paragraph, it started to go into an argument about why city people and why their neighbors are opposed to them putting up this permanent patio cover. And the word antisemitism pops out again and again and again. And it sure does remind me of another project we have in front of us where people who seem to not be able to win but call people names are using that as a smokescreen for why people should support them. But I cannot imagine, after talking to the councilman from Ward Four, nobody has permanent shades out there. They all know that, so I do not understand. I just say that as a comment because I'm sad to see this. I hope it's not a disease that's catchy, but it's been in the papers, and now it's up again as somebody's reason, as a straw man possibly, to just simply try to get us to vote against them, to vote for them. And I just don't like that at all. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Did the city clerk receive a copy of that letter? Do you have a copy of the letter? You have it?
We do have a copy, thank you.
Okay. I didn't get a copy.
Your Honor, I'll give you my copy, and since it's printed, I...
Is it signed as well?
Well, I noticed there were a number of them in different mailboxes.
Okay.
Yeah, and it was signed by the applicants. Well, Ms. Leah Bagnon.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm just saying, it's disturbing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion to deny the application, so if you are voting to deny, you say yea. Got it? I know you know it after two years. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, agenda items seventy-eight and seventy-nine are obeyed to the second of May. Does that sound right? So we are at eighty and eighty-one. Eighty, S U P seven-two-five-four-five, public hearing, applicant owner, Canowa Sub Two LLC, for possible action or request for special use permit for proposed short-term residential rental use with a waiver to allow two-hundred-and-seventy foot, seventy-six foot distance separation from a similar use where sixty feet is required at two-two-three South Ninth Street, R four, high-density residential. This is with Councilman Coffin in Ward Three, and the staff recommends denial, and planning recommends approval. This is a public hearing. I declare it open as the applicant present. No applicant. Okay. Mr. Lowenstein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The applicant is proposing to operate a short-term residential rental unit that does not meet the minimum required distance separation of six-hundred-and-sixty feet from a similar use. There is one other short-term rental unit within the separation radius, and due to the required waiver, staff has recommended denial of the use as incompatible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I did, I think, open the public hearing, but nobody was interested. Closing that. Any comments from council before I give it to Councilman Coffin? Hearing this giant urge. It's yours. It's all yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think you meant me on that urge thing. I have an urge to finish. I'd like to move to follow staff recommendation of denial on item eighty.
Okay, there's a motion to deny on agenda item eighty. So that's the motion. Please vote and please post. Which means a yea vote to deny. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Agenda... Yes. You are doing so great. I'm so proud. Perfect record.
You know, by the way, Your Honor, you're running a really efficient meeting, and we're moving along. Good.
We are.
Senator Segalblum texted me and said, "You know, I can't believe you guys work so hard." That's a long meeting.
Can you believe that?
I told him this was a shorty.
It's been longer. Okay, we're on agenda item eighty-one. This is S U P seven-two-five-six-seven, public hearing, applicant owner, Emerald Investment Series One LLC, for possible action or request for special use permit for an existing short-term residential rental use at six-three-one-six Blue Jay Way, R P D five residential plan development, five units per acre, zone Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, and is the applicant or representative present?
Yes. Yes. Good afternoon, Your Honor, council members. My name is Tony Celeste, address nineteen-eighty Festival Plaza Drive. Here on behalf of the property owner and applicant, along with me is the property owner and applicant, Laura Eisenberg. First, I appreciate staff's recommendation of approval, appreciate planning commission's recommendation of approval. I'll just make some high-level highlights of the property. First, if I can just direct your attention to the overhead, can see the property is located in the neighborhood, located along Oke and Torrey Pines in this general area. You can see right here in the middle is the house. What's significant about this six-hundred-and-sixty-foot perimeter is that you see only one dot in that, and that is our dot with respect to the short-term rental, meaning that there are no other short-term rentals within six-hundred-and-sixty feet of our use. Another thing that is important to note is that Ms. Eisenberg has been operating with a business license since December of 2016. She obtained the license prior to the adoption of the use permit in 2017 that required the land use portion of the application to come back. She's been operating without any code enforcement issues, and she... At Planning Commission, we did have a couple of neighbors initially in opposition. Between Planning Commission and city council, we had an open house, and at that open house, we met with the neighbors. More importantly, Ms. Eisenberg individually met with several of them over several days and several hours, and I think what we were able to convey was taking a perception of something maybe negative and making it a positive. And I don't think I'm overstating or misrepresenting that this is actually now viewed more as an asset in the area versus some type of hindrance. So with that, we truly appreciate staff, planning commission's support, and respectfully request yours, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. That's a good recommendation.
Thank you.
Let's try Mr. Lowenstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Mr. Celeste indicated, the applicant has held a business license for a short-term residential rental at this location since December of 2016, prior to the requirements of a special use permit or conditional use verification or distance separation from a similar use. Since that time, has continued to operate without any enforcement actions or neighborhood complaints. In June of 2017, with the new ordinance they adopted, which required all short-term residentials to meet the requirements of Title Nineteen, including a special use permit if applicable, the use would not be owner-occupied and contains three bedrooms, and therefore would require the special use permit. In addition to being licensed and established use with no code enforcement complaints, the site meets the six-hundred-and-sixty-foot distance separation requirement and can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious with existing surrounding land uses, and staff was recommending approval.
Thank you very much. Public hearing, anybody? Yes. And please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. Denise Reitz. I live at nineteen-twelve Blue Jay Circle. I just first want to say that when I was at planning, I was vehemently denying and opposing this because I was unaware of what Ms. Eisenberg had in store for the home. We've lived, my husband and I, and this has been a tight-knit community. I am the head of the neighborhood watch of the neighborhood, and so I... My husband and I had, because we did not know Laura and her husband, John, we didn't know anything about this until we saw the postcards coming to the neighbors. We didn't know anything about this land use or business use until we saw the big postboard coming up in the land, the property. So we... My husband and I went, and we got all kinds of people opposing this. We had over fifty signatures. We had over, I believe, fourteen people in opposition of this. But when we left planning and they had approved it, we went home, and that very next day, Laura and her husband came knocking at our door at about seven o'clock at night and said we were her last people to see. She had been to every single person that had been at the meeting, and I am here to say that after looking at her vetting process, her application is amazing. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at this, what she goes through and how she looks at her applicants and denies most of them because they don't meet her requirement. Also, she has... That house is beautiful. It's absolutely gorgeous, inside and out. I just wanted to also tell you that I am so pleased. Thank you so much for everyone here that approved the S U P, because the neighbors would not have ever known about this land being used as a business if that would not have been told with the postcards going out. So I want to make, for record, make sure you keep this for years and years and years, because people own homes that live in the neighborhoods. They want to make sure that they know who's owning these homes and renting them out for short-term use. So anyway, I just wanted to tell you, I'm just so impressed. She and her husband, John, really have gone over and above and beyond making sure that there's not a party that goes on in that home, that there's a single-family resident as far as people or families that are renting the home. I'm just very impressed. And anytime she gave us her personal and her business phone, there's any time that anything happens, we can call her. We have the twenty-four-hour number that if there's anything going on that shouldn't be going on, that she told me that there wouldn't be going on. I can call the twenty-four-hour hotline number. I mean, it's been wonderful.
Great.
Let's see. And last thing, the S U P, it holds the owners accountable.
Correct.
I really believe that. If there's one thing I can make a recommendation, and I don't know if this is the time or place of it, but if she were to sell the resident, the home that is for business use only, it's landlocked, from what I understand, the new owners must, and I'm hoping that they will have to go through this process as well.
Yes.
So that this just, they don't get...
No, they don't.
And that they have to...
Correct.
So that I'm hoping that that's something we can do. But anyway, I am improved. I hope this gets approved. I'm in favor of this, and I'm just so pleased that she and her husband, John, are owners of the home.
Wonderful. Praise for all of us. You obviously did a great job, especially with such opposition. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming down and speaking on this. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak? Okay, I'm going to close public hearing, and with great news. Councilwoman, it's yours.
You may recall that when some of the people called, I did ask them to meet with her, and you did, and I'm so happy you followed through. I'm so happy that you were proactive in doing that, and really pleased that we have a situation where the short-term rental is embraced because of the very careful way in which it's operated. So happy for you. Move to approve.
Madam, if I could, just for the record, this is Brian down here. Just indicate that the special use permit will remain with the property even if this couple sold...
I know.
Okay, just want to make sure. I just want to clarify that for the...
I think it was the mayor who spoke. Yeah, but the question I think was, was would the new person who bought the house have to go through the same thing, or do they automatically have the S U P?
Perhaps business licensing.
That was the question.
For the record, Mary Mclehone, Deputy Planning Director, the answer to that is no. The new owner would not have to go through this process. The way it stands right now, the S U P would be in place.
We need to change that.
It stays with the land.
I think that's what's being done.
It would be a new business license process, and the way... It's a general license, and they could literally apply online.
Because my understanding it was that as the property sells, they have to reapply, because it could be a tell-of-the-hun. I think we should go ahead and review. I was under the wrong understanding, and I think that should happen.
Yeah, no, and it is. I think Michelle will tell you more.
We are working through this S T R process. It's not perfect, but we are looking, as we go forth, as we license people for S T Rs, that the license is individuals. So if you sell, if someone else purchases, they have to get another business license, different S U P. I don't know what we're doing with the S U P, but we are looking to make sure all S T Rs are individual.
Well, I'd highly recommend that the... And I think you brought this up, that the onus is on the owner of the property, and if an owner lives in New York City and sells to somebody in China, it's the owner of the property that's responsible. And I think we should make sure that's very clear. As properties change hands, they may lose. Maybe there's somebody in the queue waiting for another S T R, and a new owner should have to get back in line.
Yeah.
So can you... Are you the one behind this, Councilwoman? You're working on it?
Yes.
With staff?
So we are. We are working with staff, and there's a few things that we are looking at, and one of the major things with the S T Rs is to make sure that everything is individual. I purposely... I mean, I am not in favor of the big ugly signs, period. I don't like that at all. But there's quite a few things that I have to discuss with my peers and stuff to make sure everybody's happy, our community, the constituents. But we are not... The way it is today, and I'm new, now I'm not, he is, but the way it is today, I just think that we need to make adjustments. So adjustments, I believe, are forthcoming.
And thank you for bringing it up, because without question, I believed every new owner had to reapply and get in line, which obviously is not the case, and hopefully that will come to be. Each new owner needs to qualify.
And Mayor, Councilman Soroka have also been working on this as well, and that is a concern that one of the several we're trying to smooth out.
And Mayor, I just want to go on the record to say I would be in full support of that. I was under the same impression as you were in my couple of years of dealing with this, and I would be in full support of having the special use permit go along with the owner, not necessarily with the property. Thank you.
And I would further recommend, as they go through it, that in waiting in line, because somebody else could get there, property changes hands, you go back to the back of the line or the line of who's waiting to become an S T R. So as we go forward with that, and if it's under Councilman Soroka or Councilwoman Fiore, please put that in your bucket. So at this point...
If I might just say something, too. Mary, for some time, has been working on tweeting our short-term rental, and I know I had spoken to her about the fact that I didn't care for it because it went with the land, and she's been working on that. And now with Michelle... And she's been working on that, and now with Michelle able to connect it with licensing, and that would be the better way. Yeah, it's the better way.
So, did we do this all? Did we vote?
No.
Okay, Councilwoman.
Excuse me. Before you vote--
I said I moved to approve.
Before you vote, can I make one more comment?
Only if it's as good as your last ones.
I hope so. So can I follow up with Councilman Fiori about this so that I can stay abreast? I'd like to stay very proactive with this to make sure that it is something that will get approved.
Here's a card from Ms. McElhone. It's the proper way to go.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion, and our Mayor Pro Tem needs to vote on our motion, and our new councilman needs to vote. There's a motion to approve. You're missing in action. Did he do it? There it is. Okay, motion is granted. Thank you for the great job you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, and I also want to just welcome the councilman as well. Appreciate working with him on the planning commission and look forward to working with him at the city council level. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you, Miss Weaks, for coming down and doing that. Taught us something. Okay, we are now on agenda item 82, which is an amazing, for a second of the month meeting. It's 10 after 3. Set the date on any appeals filed or required public hearings. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings, dangerous buildings, or nuisance litter abatements.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Citizen participation. This is our second citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the council unless that subject is on the agenda scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion, any single subject, as well as the amount of time. Any single speakers allowed may be limited. It's your opportunity to address the council, but council's not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Any members of the public wish to be heard under this portion of the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to agenda item 84, which I believe is councilmember recognition. And I was going to turn to you first, but you have nothing to say, right, councilman?
I have nothing to say, but--
He's too tired, so we got one freebie here. This is councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. We are going to start off with our brand-new councilman career.
I get to go first. How about that?
Right.
Membership has its privileges. First, just let me thank everyone for today is an extremely exciting day, being sworn in today, and all of the support that I've received from my friends, my family, my neighbors, and as well as from this council in the mayor's office. Thank you very much. We have our very first movie in the park Saturday, April 21st, so please join me this Saturday as I'll host my first Ward 5 movie in the park. We will feature Disney's Coco at the Sammy Davis Junior Festival Plaza at Lorenzo Park. And yeah, welcome to bring low-back chairs and blankets for comfortable lawn seating. Bring your family, neighbors to enjoy a fun-filled evening with your Ward 5 councilman and myself. Refreshments will be provided while supplies last. I look forward to greeting you. For more information, please call my office, (702) 229-5443. Then we also have Saturday, May 12th, which is great. It's got Sound the Alarm, Save a Life. I was the former chairman of the American Red Cross, so this somewhat hits home to me. The American Red Cross will host their Sound the Alarm event on Saturday, May 12th. This event is geared to provide home fire safety, education, and evacuation planning. The volunteers and partners will make arrangements with you to install free smoke alarms and replace batteries in existing alarms. So the event will take place at the Kianga Asoke Palacio Park, which is Doolittle. This is a recurring national event where Red Cross volunteers will partner with fire departments and community groups across the country. Seven times a day, someone in this country dies in a house fire, and more than 60% of fire deaths occur in homes without working smoke alarms. So please join me in an effort to educate and save lives of our family. For more information, please contact my office once again, (702) 229-5443. You can also stay in touch with us at Ward 5 through Twitter, @CedricCreer, through Instagram, @CouncilmanCreer, and through Facebook, @CouncilmanCedricCreer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman. Thank you so much, and welcome.
Thank you.
Now I have someone to poke on my left side. So we're going to start off with our Mondays with Michelle, which will be on April 24th. We'll be at the Centennial Hills YMCA at 6601 North Buffalo Drive, and we'll have, of course, food. I'll be there from noon to 6:00. It's a great opportunity to come into our office, talk about your concerns, talk about what we're doing in the ward, and everyone is welcome. I'm very, very excited for May 6th, and that is going to be our Cinco de Mayo. The celebration continues. Me and my peer, Stavros Anthony, out there in the northwest. We will be having tacos and tequila on Sunday, May 6th. And when we say the party continues, because Cinco de Mayo is the 5th, we are having this purposely on the 6th. We are also having Jose Hernandez, the number-one mariachi band in America, perform. We're flying him in. We're going to, this particular band sold out of our Smith Center twice last year, and they will be joining us for our Cinco de Mayo. That's May 6th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Not from, this flyer up here is incorrect, it is not 10:00 to 2:00, it is 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And I'll be, we'll go on to our next Coco in the Park. I guess Coco is the movie.
Coco.
Coco is the movie. So right after May 6th, then on May 11th at 7:00 p.m., we'll be at the Centennial Hills Park Amphitheater at 7101 North Buffalo Drive for our movies in the park, and we'll have popcorn and water and some candy. I look forward to seeing everyone there. Me and my grandkids and my daughters will be there. It was so much fun, and our last movies in the park. We're going to talk about our next movie in the park in June, which we have Wonder. Wonder, I can't wait to see that movie either. That's going to be June 8th, 7:00 p.m. Movies in the Park. A little ahead of ourselves there. Now let's talk about our animals. We have two great animals, which is Snuggles, which is a cat, a domestic shorthair, six-year-old spayed female. She is at our adoption campus, and this sweet little girl is wonderful. She enjoys her catnip and soft treats, as well as she scratches under her chin. A perfect addition to a cat-friendly home. Then we have Coda. Coda's a mixed breed, right? Said our councilman career's dog's name is Coda. So, he's a male. He's only two years old, so he's quite young. And Coda's a big baby with lots of love to share. He would be, he would love to be part of an active family, but he also needs to be the only dog in the home. So he knows how to sit, and he knows how to paw, and he loves to talk when he gets excited. That's Coda. So both of these animals for the next 24 hours. If you guys go to our Animal Foundation and pick up Snuggles or Coda, it's on me. Councilwoman Michelle Fiori. Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Well, we're asking you to join the City of Las Vegas for Safe Summer Nights at Red Rock Elementary tomorrow night from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in Ward 1. The event will have a free DJ, family games, face painting, arts and crafts, and a community health and resource fair. It always attracts a lot of families, so be sure and come because mixing together and joining in all the games is a good thing to do with all of us together. We'll also have free refreshments while the supplies last. Red Rock Elementary is located at 408 Upland Avenue, and that's tomorrow night from 5:00 to 7:00. And then you can grab your blankets, your low chairs for a movie in the park on Friday, April 27th at dusk. And guess what movie we'll be showing?
You can see it three times.
Yes. Well, it won an Academy Award. We should all see it, right? We'll be showing the award-winning movie Coco at West Charleston Lions Essex Circle Park, which is located at 600 Essex Circle. Again, free popcorn, water, and other supplies as long as they last. And then we will have a baby bash because the Southern Nevada Health District is offering immunizations and a health fair on Friday, April 27th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at their facility on 280 South Decatur Boulevard. You may remember, that's where we used to have our Target. Adult immunizations, as well as dental and vision screenings, will be available as well. For more information, please contact the Health District at (702) 759-0850. Just think of it, you can have a dental examination of all your children, and then you can take them to see Coco. The Children's Day at Springs Preserve is on Saturday, April 28th, from noon to 5:00, and there will be hand-on arts and crafts, face painting, a petting zoo, and live entertainment. For ticket information, please contact the Springs Preserve at (702) 822-7700, or you can visit their website at springspreserve.org. And then, join us, please, from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. on Cinco de Mayo to Welcome Back Fire Station 103 at 190 Upland Avenue. They've been missed greatly, everybody in the area. The neighborhood is so excited that they're coming back. To celebrate, we'll have a jump house, face painters, a DJ, a panada, and free tacos while supplies last. It's a wonderful opportunity to meet your local firefighters in Ward 1. And lastly, this Thursday, I will be joining the Springs Preserve and the Red Mercury Entertainment for a press conference unveiling the One Farm Living Well, Living Wall, and Well, at the Springs Preserve. The Living Wall is comprised of scores of succulents and other plants that will remain at the Springs Preserve through September 8th. And then on that date, the Springs Preserve will host the inaugural One Farm Local Food Farm Festival, and we will be a celebration of locally sourced food, produce, wine, beer, and other products. The family-friendly event will promote sustainability and healthy living, so check out the Living Wall later this week and mark your calendars for the festival on September 8th. And I hope you all have a great day today and rest of the week. Thank you.
Nice. Councilman Anthony, what's going on? Coco?
No. I don't know.
He probably already had--
I'm not sure if I'm doing Coco yet. I do have one event, though. Let's see. There you go. It's Healthy Kids Day in Ward 4 at the Drango YMCA at Drango Hills Community Center, Drango Drive and Gowan. It's going to be April 21st, 2018, from 1:00 to 3:00. We'll have lots of activities and vendors out there to make sure that you have healthy kids. We'll talk about Zumba, and relays, and arts and crafts, and lots of other things. So come on out to the Drango Hills Y in Ward 4, 1:00 to 3:00, and I'll be out there if you want to chat with me. So, thank you.
No pickleball?
The pickleball's right next door, so if you want to challenge me--
Oh, there you go. You got a challenge with the Councilman Anthony. Go pickleball. Okay, Councilman Soroka.
Thank you, Mayor. We've already had Coco movie in the park, so we're glad everybody else is having that same opportunity.
Don't give away the punchline.
Well, thank you. On the next slide, I'm happy with my support of Nevada Childseekers. We've had another success.
Good.
Outstanding. So Stephen Cole was found, and he was missing for two months. So good work in our community, and thank you to Margarita Edwards, the CEO of Nevada Childseekers, and all her good work. And she was featured on my City of Las Vegas XSTV program this past, this coming week. So thank you, Margarita. And we have more, well, unfortunately, we have other missing children. Right now, we're going to highlight Ariana Collier-Christie. She's a 17-year-old female, approximately five foot three tall and 125 pounds, with brown hair and eyes. She was last seen in the area of Washington Avenue and North Mojave Road. Please, please contact Nevada Childseekers or the Metro Police at the numbers listed if you have any information about Ariana. And let's take that to the next slide. We have the Big Search from on May 4th and May 5th. We're searching for 20 local missing children. And the public is welcome to sign up by visiting their website at NevadaChildSeekers.org. And let me share with you how important this event is. The last big effort helped bring home 22 of 30 missing children in our area.
Wow.
So volunteers are welcome. Please sign up at the website. Please do at NevadaChildSeekers.org to help with the Big Search in May. So thank you. Next up, we have Green Fest in Honor of Earth Day coming up this Saturday, April 21st, from 9:00 to 5:00. It is in downtown Summerlin and sponsored by Nevada Star Partners, including the Green Alliance. Now, this is the largest Earth Day celebration. It's in downtown Summerlin with the city staff, with Las Vegas city staff from Planning and the Office of Sustainability. It's free, and it's from 9:00 to 5:00. For more information, look online at greenfestlv.com. And we acknowledge that this is, this event is being held in the county, and we're happy to have our county partners be there and join with us. Look forward to seeing you there. And of course, an event coming up that's near and dear to my heart, we have the Armed Forces Affair in May. On May 19th, that's Armed Forces Day Weekend, which is a celebration of our veterans from all services and veteran advocates. This is an opportunity to continue the conversation about how amazing our veterans are and the contributions they make to our community in various areas of our city. Surf and Turf is on the menu, and you can have a vegetarian dinner as well, and we will have some amazing speakers that will be presenting that have served in the military and are now wonderful business partners with us in the city of Las Vegas. And on the next slide, please contact me at any, you can follow me on Twitter, Steve Soroka LV, or look on Facebook at Steve Soroka LV. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And so I will conclude this, of course, I know we all extend deep sympathies to the family of former First Lady Barbara Bush, who passed away, as you know, yesterday. Also, we, on the other side of the excitement, we wish our Vegas Golden Knights more success in the next round as they go forward. We're so proud and thrilled. Want to let you know that on Sunday, the 22nd, at Thomas &amp; Mack, our animal foundation, will be having the Best in Show. Tickets are $5. Children five and under are free. The doors open at the Thomas &amp; Mack at 12:30 p.m., and the actual Best in Show begins at 1:00. And there are some cute dogs. If you go online, little ones, middle-sized ones, big ones, special needs dogs, too. So it really is quite terrific. And it's sponsored this year by Zappos. Shout out to Zappos and the Thank You Cox as well. And this Friday, our Own Ma Museum is opening the Underground. It's going to be featuring a speakeasy in the basement of the museum, which will house a real operating distillery and speakeasy, featuring its own distilled spirits and house-brewed beer and prohibition-era cocktails. So it's going to be fabulous, and I want to thank our wonderful staff and our marshals and everybody that works IT for us, our clerk's office, and of course, my colleagues welcoming our newest member who did so well, perfect record.
I had a little stumble.
One, only one, but that's fine, and we erased it, which is always good.
Yes.
So you have a clean record. And so it's just, it's grand and good meeting, and thank you all. Our next city council meeting is Wednesday, May 2nd, at 9:00. So don't forget, Best in Show, Thomas &amp; Mack. Don't forget the speakeasy downstairs at the Ma Museum. And I, Councilwoman Mayor Pro Tem, and I love tearing up things so we don't collect paper.
Absolutely. It's a thrill.
So have a good one. Again, thank you, IT. Thank you, marshals. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you, staff. Marshals, thank you. Thank you. We're done. Adjourned.